Good evening and welcome to the July 25th meeting of the Milton Select Board. Before we begin, please join us as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. Item three is public comment. We allot 15 minutes for public comment, three minutes per speaker. Ms. Napoli will keep track of the 15 minutes. I'll keep track of the three minutes. And we can have speakers both present, as Mr. Sweeney is present, and also through the remote internet. Remote internet, that's interesting. All right, why don't we start with Mr. Sweeney for public comment. Mr. Sweeney, we know you, but if you could just put your, tell us your name and your address, just for the record, please.
My name is Bob Sweeney. I live at 156 Woody Road. And I'm here tonight representing my neighborhood, the Indian Cliffs Association. I am president of that association. And I'm concerned about item 15 on your agenda. And I'm going to limit my remarks to two sentences. As an abutting neighborhood, Indian Cliffs has not been given the courtesy of being informed by the Select Board, AKA Governor Stoughton trustees, about tonight's item number 15 relative to the request for proposals for affordable housing at Town Farm. Going forward, it is important that Indian Cliffs, as well as other abutting neighbors, including the 23 new homes at Milton Woods, the 56 condominium owners-
Recording in progress.
-at Quisic Brooks, and the 10 homeowners living on Governor Stoughton Lane. We ask that we be welcomed and have the opportunity to be active participants in any proposals that may affect our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sweeney.
Thank you.
Next, it appears, Ms. Napoli, who's first of the three that appear to have by the hybrid?
I believe Echo Burquist.
Echo Burquist? You want to promote?
Hello.
Hi. If you could just state your name and your address for the record, and then please proceed.
Sure. Thank you for having me. My name is Echo Burquist. I live at 42 Lincoln Street, Precinct Four. Very grateful for the time tonight. My comment tonight is to urge the Select Board's leadership on swift compliance with the MBTA Communities Act. I believe strongly that encouraging housing near transit is hugely beneficial to our community. And I think that the name of the act, MBTA Communities Act, doesn't quite capture all the benefits of citing housing near transit. Because near the T stops, there are shops, restaurants, grocery store, many other needed services. And people living there in that area can reduce their need to drive a car, in many instances, by biking or walking, and using the T, of course, using the Blue Bike Station, taking buses. Personally, I use the Napanzit Trail that's right next to the T daily on my bike commute to work. And I think I want to emphasize that the reduction of unnecessary car trips is really key in the MBTA Communities Act, but also in the fight against climate change. Something which I think we are, we have moved past the point of a hypothetical and into this is the reality in which we now live. Our skies are clouded with wildfire smoke on a regular basis at this point. We just set a record for heat globally last month. So, on that note, this state law was enacted with a clear deadline for compliance. And I think expeditiousness is the point. I really urge you to be leaders in pushing this compliance according to the deadline, like many other communities who have already been in compliance. We all should be doing more to combat climate change. We should have been doing more for many years. This is a little bit too late, but it's also a golden opportunity to do something concrete that will have a real impact on Milton's overall carbon footprint. I'm confident, I've followed the process so far, there have been weekly meetings, and I know that any rezoning and eventual development will be undertaken thoughtfully and maintaining neighborhood charm and character. I really look forward to your leadership on this process. And I urge you once again to please meet the deadline, comply with state law, and take meaningful action on climate change. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Burquist. Next, we have, it looks like, is it Mr. Jackson next? Flynn? Mr. Jackson. So if you could promote Mr. Jackson.
Can you hear me?
I can. We can, Pete. Please go ahead.
Fantastic. Good evening. Before I make my planned comments, I just want to make a, let you know or make some statement about the new town website. It looks gorgeous, but I find it much more difficult to navigate. And it took several extra steps to log into this meeting tonight. When I finally found the agenda with the link, the link didn't work, and I had to convert the PDF file to a Word file in order to copy and paste it into my browser so I could get into the meeting. So I hope whatever kinks there are in the process that you'll get them worked out, and I trust you will. I want to talk to you briefly tonight about two items. First, the property on Blue Hill Avenue that the school building committee is considering for the proposed new school. I wasn't able to attend last night's meeting, so they may have rejected it, I'm not sure. But I think it's too early to do so. Because if the town is not successful in the Article 97 process, it may become necessary to seek another site, and it may come back, this site may come back into play. Secondly, the town is land poor when it comes to finding locations for future needs. I think acquisition of this site for the town for general municipal purposes would give the town a place to turn to when a new need arises without having to go back and consider converting conservation land again. The second thing I want to talk to briefly is the MBTA Communities Housing Initiative. I support compliance with the goals and the requirements of this zoning. I participated in the process and submitted comments to the planning department, the planning board, and to your board. A major thrust of those comments dealt with issues of equity and preserving neighborhood character. An issue I have repeatedly raised was the proposed 5,000 square foot minimum lot size for rezoning for multifamily housing in the Elliott Street neighborhood. As a landscape architect, I've got a pretty good understanding of the use of outdoor space. To place a three-unit building with three off-street parking spaces-
Pardon me, Pete, just 30 seconds, pardon me.
...does not leave adequate outdoor space for children to play, families to relax outdoors or garden, or provide relief from the dense urban settings. I would like to again request that the town explore making the minimum lot size 7,500 square feet to provide further design flexibility and provide private outdoor space more in keeping with Milton's character. Thank you.
Thank you, Pete. Thank you, Pete. All right. Ms. Napoli, is it Mr. O'Halloran, isn't it?
Yes.
All right. How are we doing on overall time?
We have six minutes and 15 seconds to go.
All right. We have three speakers, so if each of you can keep it to two, then we can have all three of you. But the first two can go to three if they want. So, Mr., please promote Mr. O'Halloran.
I did. Hope you just joined.
Mr. O'Halloran, are you there?
Yes, hi. Can you hear me?
We can. If you could just give your name and address, and then proceed, please.
Sure. Brian O'Halloran. I live on 4 Morton Terrace. And thank you for taking the time to listen to some of my comments, which I like to direct specifically around the reclassification, MBTA reclassification discussion and approval that you all are talking about tonight. I'd like to first talk a little bit about the impact of the proposed 2,461 units. If we do a little bit of math, using census data from 2020, that's approximately 6,400 additional residents in the town of Milton, which would result in about a 22% increase in the population spread across a very small portion of the town. There's currently 1,400 parcels along that one-half a mile radius between the four T stops. And that would balloon at least threefold at full implementation. If we currently take the two streets that are most affected, it turns out they're Elliott Street and Central Ave. And they would be the most affected by this proposal. And they're already very densely populated areas of Milton. And I think we'd all agree that's asking a lot of the families directly affected by this legislation. In addition, I'd like to kind of talk just a little bit about some of the disparities between the T service line here and the Matapan High Speed Trolley versus, for example, the Green Line, the Sea Line, and Brookline. We only have four T stops here in Milton. The Brookline Sea Line alone has 12. The size, the capacity, and the quality of our 80-year-old cars compared to the Green Line, I think anyone would have to agree, there's really no comparison. The ridership numbers between the Trolley and Sea Line, and any reasonable person would have to agree, once again, there's no comparison.
Pardon me, 30 seconds, Mr. O'Halloran.
I'm sorry, how long?
30 seconds, sorry.
Okay. So, we are being asked to meet the rezoning requirements by the Commonwealth when the MBTA can or won't fix the need and improvements for the infrastructure at the Milton T stop. The DHCD plan is one-size-fits-all and does not take into account the unique characteristics of each town. Reclassification would fix this.
Thank you, Mr. O'Halloran.
Great. The Select Board has a unique opportunity to correct this inequality and reclassify. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Halloran. And I'd like to make sure that there's no one present that wants to come up to Citizen Speak in addition. Oh, we do have two. All right. So we should go, we only have probably time for two more. So I don't know who was first of the three of you. It looks like it was the man in the maroon shirt, perhaps. So, and then we'll have one more from the remote section.
Good evening. My name's Steve Acera. I've lived in precinct 10 for the past 30 years.
Could you give your address, Mr. Acera, please?
It's 49 Meadowview.
Thank you, sir. All right. You have three minutes, sir.
I noticed, I heard about this event by word of mouth, and I noticed on the agenda that you're going to be addressing the reclass, potential reclassification for the MBTA Communities Act. I just wanted to bring it to the board's attention that this battle has already been fought and won by the town back in 1968. There was an attempt to convert the town to rapid transit that was defeated, acknowledged in the Fourth Annual Report of the Board of Directors of the MBTA covering the period October 67 to October 68. I'd like to read from page four of the MBTA Board's annual report on that date. "Since the adoption of the authority's first comprehensive program for mass transportation in 1966, there's been one revision. This was the proposed conversion of the high-speed Matapan Trolley Line to rapid transit by extending the red line from Ashmont to Matapan Square. At Matapan, it was proposed to build storage and repair facilities to replace those at Cambridge-Bennett-Elliott facilities, the plant site of the JFK Library. This revision was approved by the Board of Directors on February 28, 1968, and by the Advisory Board on February 29, 1968. Litigation brought by the town of Milton, however, has prevented the authority from going forward with this project." A report of the Executive Secretary for the Town of Milton Selectment issued December 31, 1969, reads, "The Board's Executive Secretary again attended every MBTA Advisory Board meeting and was pleased that the final one on December 19 resulted in the approval of the Dover Street site for the relocation of the Bennett-Elliott Street Barnes, thereby ending the threatened Matapan Rapid Transit Extension." So you have official government records from the MBTA and the town's Executive Secretary showing that Milton-Matapan Trolley Line is not rapid transit, and that whole concept died back in 1969. So I would support reclassification as a fallback position, that the town is an adjacent community to rapid transit and not a rapid transit community. And I have copies of these for the board.
Thank you, Mr. Acera.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Napoli, did we hit our 15-minute time?
We did.
We did. So our apologies to those who did not get a chance to speak this evening. Please send us an email or contact the Town Administrator's Office if it's pressing. Or please join us on August 8 for Citizen Speak, and we'll try to accommodate everyone in that 15 minutes. So again, we apologize that we weren't able to get to you this evening, but please be sure that your voices will be heard, whether you send it by email or show up at our next meeting. All right. Item three, item four, sorry, is introduction and welcome of new Milton police officers. I think Chief King is here with some individuals. And Chief, I don't know if you want to bring up the officers?
Yeah, sure.
Before we begin, a couple of introductory comments. One is, in a recent study by Visual Capitalist that has been published by Mass Live, Milton was acknowledged as the 13th safest community in the United States. And certainly, that is a credit to our department under Chief King, and those have been in the department for a long time. Now, two of those who've been in the department for a long time recently retired, and we're going to acknowledge them. I'm sure we'll have a citation, and they have an open invitation to come in. But I think it's important just to mention them before we get into the new officers. The first is Sergeant Mike Breen. And Sergeant Breen started as a police officer in 1980 at the age of 21. He spent his entire career assigned to the Uniform Patrol Division, including a stint in the motorcycle unit. He was promoted to sergeant in 1990 and became the night shift street supervisor. He served the town of Milton as a police officer and its residents for 42 years and nine months. And according to existing records, Sergeant Breen is the longest-serving sworn member and the longest-serving sergeant of the Milton Police Department. His most distinguished trait, according to many, was an almost photographic memory of names, faces, and incidents. So we'll recognize certainly Sergeant Breen in a citation, and he has, we'll hopefully get him into one of our meetings in the future. Also, Sergeant Mike Dillon started as a police cadet in 1986. He was promoted to a police officer in 1989. He spent many years in the patrol division, including a stint as well in the motorcycle unit. He worked for several years alongside his father, Sergeant George Dillon. He served for many years as the day officer, assigned as a liaison, working inside the Milton Public Schools. And he also served as a detective in the detective division. He was promoted to sergeant in 2017 and returned to the Uniform Patrol Division as a day shift street supervisor. Sergeant Dillon served the town of Milton and its residents as a police officer in this town for 36 years and four months. So those are two of your predecessors. And we look forward to recognizing them in the coming weeks and months. So with that, Chief King, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mike. Thanks for recognizing them. They both had a long history here. They deserve the recognition. Just briefly, I'm going to introduce you to these guys. They all have come on, really, in the past fiscal year. The last probably three years in particular, we've had a lot of turnover, a lot of retirements, a lot of new faces. So departments losing a lot of experience, but gaining a lot of people with new ideas and new thoughts and stuff like that. So, you know, with the good and the bad kind of on both ends. So, no particular order here, but we kind of go with like the fiscal year. You know, Zach was really the first one at the beginning of the fiscal year. And by the way, I'll just say as a whole, this group are all kids who grew up in Milton. You know, I call them kids, this one's younger than me, but they all grew up in Milton. They're products of, you know, the Milton schools. You know, Caroline attended Fontblanc, but still schools here in Milton.
That's okay. That's all right. The new superintendent won't hold that against you.
Just being honest. But, you know, they're all Milton individuals. They're not people who moved here late in life or just came here and applied for a job. You know, they have an interest in the community. They've all been part of the community long before they got out of the police department. So, you know, as a whole, they all grew up here. They're all, you know, products of the school system here. They all, you know, have college experience. Most of them have graduated. A couple of them are still working on it. So, you know, they're all college educated and stuff. But starting with Zach Mazzarella down the end here. You know, he went to Milton High School. He attended St. Angelo's. He ended up getting on the police department up there. You know, always had an interest in here. I remember him kind of cold calling me. I didn't know him from a hole in the wall, trying to get on here and just asking what he could do to better himself and be a better candidate. So, you know, good initiative on his part. Always wanted to come back here and, you know, taking that kind of initiative to be like, hey, what can I do to improve myself? But without any advice from me, you know, he was doing the right thing. He got on Bedford Police in New Hampshire, was very well liked there, was picked for a lot of specialty roles, and, you know, had a pretty good career there until we stole him. So I welcome him. Timothy Peterson, also Milton High School graduate, went on to Mass Maritime after high school, graduated there. His mom works in Town Hall. Some of you may be familiar with her, but also been a great addition. Aiden Johnson, who's working right now, he just is one of the more recent graduates. He was a cadet in our cadet program, which I'm a huge fan of. Really great opportunity for the kids to learn about the job in the town, great opportunity for us to screen candidates and develop them. Aiden also went to high school. He's one of the people currently attending college, not yet completed, but working towards it. Andrew Johnson started at the DPW, actually, worked at- Andrew Johnson started at the DPW, actually, worked at the DPW. We stole him for the cadet program. He got great reviews when he was at the DPW. They spoke very highly of him up there, didn't want to lose him, but he, you know, had an interest in law enforcement, came to our cadet program, similarly, you know, advanced through that program. He did do a short stint where he did some part-time work down in Middleborough, something like reserve-type police work and stuff like that. But, you know, stayed committed here and, you know, got hired here. He also, after Milton High School, went on to Mass Maritime, completed that. Caroline Butts, first met her as an intern. We don't take a lot of interns because sometimes they have a lot of work, but she talked us into it, and we were glad we did. So that was her first exposure to her. She did a great job. We really liked her. She was, you know, like I said, graduate Font Bonn. She was attending St. Anselms at the time. She did a great job, you know, expressed interest. We told her, you know, take the cadet exam, the dispatcher exam, and the police exam. And the funny thing with her, she was kind of at the top of all three at the same time. And we called her in for an interview for like cadet, and then we're like, well, we actually have a dispatcher. And then within like a couple of weeks, we had a police officer open that we could get to or for us. So she kind of skipped right to the top one. Smart choice. And we welcomed her. And Molly Dillon, like Aiden, is one of the more recent ones, also went to high school. She went on to college, still working on completing her college work. Her mother was a crossing guard for a long time for the town. So they have a lot of roots in the town. They're all, you know, their first year here, and Zach obviously has some experience elsewhere, and, you know, Andrew has a little bit elsewhere. But, you know, we welcome them. Just, you know, quick introduction. They're welcome to say anything, but I know what it's like. They probably don't want to. I get it.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you all for coming by this evening. Question or comment, questions or comments from the members? Ms. Musto.
I just wanted to say, it's wonderful to see all of you here. A lot of you, I know the families, and I think some of you probably know my sons as well. So it's just great to see you guys all grown up in, you know, in our town, working for the town, for the better of the town. So I think that's terrific, and congratulate all of you.
Other comments and questions, members? So I'll say thank you all for deciding to embark on this career and to dedicate yourself to the public safety, particularly the public safety of this town. We all appreciate it. We sometimes don't realize what we have until we need it, but when we need it, you're always there. So we thank you so much for deciding to do this. We look forward to your work for the coming years and decades, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item five is introduction, another introduction and welcome, and that is Dr. Peter Burrows, the new superintendent of the Milton Public Schools. Dr. Burrows.
Hello.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Good evening, all.
Evening.
Great to be here.
So, Dr. Burrows, I know that you've had quite a lot of publicity, certainly with the school committee, but if you could just briefly introduce yourself to those who may watch the Select Board meetings and not the school committee meetings, although I think they get much better ratings than we do, but there may be a few that you can capture.
That sounds great. Yeah, so Peter Burrows started here officially July 1. I've been coming down for a number of months and getting to know the community. I came down about two times, three times a month from when I was hired in January. So had a kind of a nice runway into really getting started. Was superintendent for 10 years in Vermont prior to coming here in Middlebury. Some folks know that from the college and other things. Also was in Oregon for 10 years as an educator. Grew up outside of New York City in Connecticut, and moving here is kind of moving closer to home. My mother's on the vineyard, and my father's in Mystic, Connecticut. So really excited to get started. I've been doing lots and lots of work in understanding where the organization is, making connections in the community, talking to as many people as possible. I've brought copies of my entry plan, hard copies. Those were also sent out to the community about a month ago or three weeks ago. And this kind of really outlines my goals this year in terms of understanding kind of Milton, understanding kind of where we are, and then working together to create a shared vision to really do the right thing for our students.
Thank you, Dr. Burrows. Questions or comments from the members?
I'll just say something quickly, if I may. So I've seen Dr. Burrows already a number of times around town, so, you know, really kudos to you. You came down for the Mamma Mia performance, I think, and...
That was amazing. That was amazing.
At Milton High School.
Yeah.
And I think you've got, you're coming into a great town at a great time. I think there's, you know, real opportunities here with, you know, the plans for the new school to shape the future of the town and education. I'm excited to see what you're going to do in the role. So welcome.
I'm excited to see what we do.
I love that attitude.
Other comments or questions from the members?
I was just going to say, thank you. I was just going to say, welcome to the community.
Thank you.
And, you know, I think it's great that you're trying to meet different people in the community as well to get perspective. So I think that's great, and I'm pretty impressed that you already have something there for us.
Oh, yeah. Should I give it to you?
Yeah.
And for other folks, it's online if you want to go to our website.
So, Dr. Burrows, I've been remiss in not reading the entry plan as a parent of two Milton Public School students.
It's summer.
It is summer. It is summer. Not to put you on the spot, but what do you see? Can you identify what you see as the three primary challenges that you face over the next year or goals?
I mean, I think, I think there are standard challenges that any superintendent faces coming into a new community and getting rooted and kind of coalescing all of the energy that a community is feeling and is expecting as a new leader comes in. So I think, you know, one of the challenges is to, is to, I think, bring together, you know, we've had a couple of years in Milton of not consistent leadership at our central office, and so that brings with it some challenges in terms of, we've got a lot of things, a lot of energy going into our school system. It needs to be more organized and more directed. So that definitely is one of the things that I'm going to be working on. I think another thing is really helping to galvanize a shared vision in the community. And all communities over the last number of years of the pandemic have gone through so much, and I think that experience divided a lot of communities. We don't do what's right for students if we don't do it together. And so one of the challenges is bringing together everybody, not just, you know, moving from side to side or, you know, depending on whatever the issue is, but really like helping everybody see that we all have the same goals, which is really doing everything we can for our students. So I think that's another thing that, and you can see that reflected in my entry plan. That's one of the things I'm really going to be focusing on. A third challenge, I think, is as you look at, I think, kind of where education is and where we are, education as a whole tends to get inundated with kind of what's new and fads, and districts tend to move in a direction for a year or two, try it, don't like it, and then move it in another direction. So I think the final thing is helping people to see and understand that the work we're doing takes time, and we have to be patient, and we have to be really clear about where we want to go. So we need to be thinking not about what's going to happen today, although that's important, but we need to also have a long-term vision and sustain that and build on what we know, and not respond to the pressures, and you all know and experienced pressures at this table, I know, in the same way in a school system. There are so many pressures coming in, and we need to together have a sense of where we're headed long-term to be able to make those moves year after year.
Thank you, Dr. Burrows. Any other comments or questions? Dr. Burrows, thank you. Thank you for coming. Thank you for joining us, and thank you for joining the district, and we look forward to working together. We've had, I think it's been a good collaboration with the school committee, and we look forward to that continued good collaboration with the school committee. And I know you've met with the town administrator, and there'll be hopefully a good collaborative working relationship between you and the town administrator.
The one time I come and he's not here.
Well, he's here. He's just, he's remote.
He's somewhere, somewhere in cyberspace.
Yes, exactly.
No, I look forward to working closely with him, with all of you. This is an incredibly symbiotic relationship, so looking forward to all aspects of it.
Thank you, Dr. Burrows.
And thank you all for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
All right. Item six, and this will be joining us remotely, is our town administrator, who unfortunately couldn't be there. He is. So if we could, item six is the discussion update. The Town of Milton website, which we heard about in public comment, and hopefully we have an answer for that. But the new Town of Milton website went live last Thursday, I believe, so it's been less than a week. So, Mr. Milano, if you want to lead us through the update and the challenges with the new Town of Milton website?
Eric, good evening. Good to see everybody. Yes, last Thursday, we did launch, kind of a soft launch of the new site. We didn't want to get pushed too much publicity quite yet as we worked out some kinks that we knew were going to come up, and we appreciate any feedback. So if folks do have feedback, please reach out to me or to IT, and we'll certainly take that into consideration as we make tweaks going forward. And a theme that I am hearing, and Pete mentioned it earlier today, is just accessing the meetings calendar. I think one of the main differences is before was in a drop-down menu front and center, and it's still on the homepage. You do just have to scroll down, and I'll go through that quickly here in a minute. So we might be able to slide that further up the screen if that's a place that we do know gets a lot of clicks to make it more front and center, but we'll see what other comments we receive and go from there. So I'll quickly just run through a few things, just so folks are aware of a couple of the changes, and I'll fair my screen here, so you should be able to see what I see. So the homepage has a few buttons right up at the front. That should be some of our more commonly used items, including agendas and minutes, where you can see any recently posted meetings and agendas, as well as minutes associated with those meetings, and a button to sign up for alerts and notifications, which I'll go into a little bit further. But most folks will just come to the home screen. So we have these first six buttons as some of our main kind of how-tos. The next four is our more popular departments we get a lot of clicks onto. Then you scroll, if you keep scrolling down, you'll hit our news and updates information, and we do have a welcome news post here that just describes how the website works and some key things that folks should know about the site, as well as other news items that have been going on in town. And we'll continue to update these as we did on the old site, where we'll bring in new information and blast it out to subscribers to this list. And we have our Facebook feed up front, too. And then, as Mr. Jackson was mentioning earlier, the event calendar is on the homepage. You just have to slide down a little bit, scroll down to get there, and this is where you can access all of our meetings. And for example, for the Select Board tonight, if you click on Select Board, it will bring you to a page. And right here, our Zoom link is for this meeting. If you're joining from home, if you click on the agenda, you can get to the agenda of the PDF. So I'll follow up with Pete on his comments, just to understand those a little bit better, but happy to take any other feedback that we get. But we did want to make sure that this information was up front. And just for a Select Board meeting, so everybody knows, our meeting packets are posted Friday before a meeting. If you want to see the information that's been shared with the Select Board, that's all online, and we include a little link in the event, so makes it accessible for people to get to. And we have all our past meeting packets since we started posting them all here. So just take us back to the homepage to show two quick things. So agendas and minutes, which I mentioned, we'll just go over there so you can see what I mean in terms of how all the last meetings are posted. You can see all the agendas, and you can see kind of where minutes are. And I'll add that we have about two years for most boards and committees right now. The rest of our history will be coming over later this calendar year as a second phase of the project. We do have access to old meetings, old agendas. So if anybody's looking for them, reach out to us at the Town Clerk's Office. We'll get them over to you. They're stored on our old website right now, and they'll be migrated over in a few, a couple of months, over the next two months. The big thing I did want to mention was signing up for alerts. So if you use the old site and you did sign up for notifications, all of your information has been brought over, and if you, whatever you were signed up for, you continue to be signed up for. However, if you had not signed up for notifications or alerts, you can do that. So now there's a alerts button right on the homepage. Click on that, it'll bring you to a little instruction sheet, and the notify me center is where you can sign up for a wide variety of information from our site. Anytime an agenda is posted for any of our boards and committees, you can register to get an email about that. We have an alerts feature if you want to sign up for Town of Milton Emergency Alerts, which we'll send out by email if you sign up with email, or even by cell phone if you want, if you want to sign up for text messages, bid postings for people in business who might be wanting to participate in that. We also have calendar subscriptions. The big thing you should sign up for, though, is this Town of Milton News Flash for Milton News and Announcements. This will be like on our old site, anything that we publish to the home screen, to the homepage, if you subscribe here, you'll get an email with all of the same information right to your email inbox. That's where we post, we post all of our news and announcements through this category here, so please join that to just stay up to date on everything going on in Milton. I think that's the big picture, the things that most people use. We'll continue to tweak this as we go through. So as people use it, have comments, we're all ears. We just wanted to try to make it accessible and easy to use. I do hear those comments about the calendar, so we'll consider those. And the photos do cycle through, so if you're looking for other photos, they do cycle through each time on the homepage. So I was lucky enough to spend some time traveling around Milton, get some new ones for us. So I'll stop there, take any questions or receive any comments from the board. Thank you.
Questions or comments from the members? Ms. Brad.
I just wanted to really thank Nick and Rob for taking on this project and making it a more user-friendly website, including updating all of our boards and committees and making that an easier thing to happen. This was a big piece of the subcommittee that Ms. Musto and I worked on, and I just want to say, I think it's beautiful. So thank you both for not only applying for this grant, but for completing it and having it look so 2023. It's really nice, so thank you.
Other comments or questions? Ms. Musto.
I just want to say the same thing that Erin said, that it's, we were lucky to get the grant to do this, and I think Nick and Rob did a great job, and they're always, you know, looking for feedback. So if anybody has any problems or concerns and anything, they can always reach out. And I think the goal is to make it user-friendly and be able to find things. And, you know, just, they'll be updating, as I said, the minutes and agendas from previous meetings, which I think was one of the things we had talked about, too, and just making it user-friendly is really, really important so people can feel comfortable going on the site and accessing what they need to.
Other comments or questions? We have mentioned Rob, so I think we should probably mention who we're talking about. Rob is Rob Mallett, who is our Director of Information Technology, and who I think Mr. Milano was critical to the effort to get a new website put in place, and so he deserves our thanks and certainly the recognition and acknowledgement for that. And he'll be responsible for tweaking it going forward as the residents give us, give us feedback on it as well. So, thank you, Nick. And for the public, let us know, you know, by email, by calls. If you have any particular issues, let us know, and we'll, we'll try to make what is an improvement even better. So, thank you, Nick. Anything else?
No, I just, you know, you both mentioned Rob Mallett, who this would not have happened without, and also the grant funding for this project, $70,000 in grant funding from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts that paid for this and some other tweaks to the site. So grateful to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and to, for Rob, for every day that he helped folks, and he's very hands-on and always open to talk to employees, department heads, about how to tweak their site. So he's a big, big part of what we do every day in terms of what folks see for technology.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Milano. All right. Item seven is discussion update of Town Council Transition. I think we have Mr. Freitag and Mr. Mallow to join us for this. Yeah, bring him, bring him up, go ahead and bring him up. And, Mr. Milano, oh, I did, I...
Hi, Madison.
Madison, I'm sorry, Madison. I don't think we've met. I apologize. I didn't know you. I was wondering who you were, and so now it's good to know. It's good to know who you are and that you're with Kevin, so that's good. Mr. Milano, do you want to tee this up for us, or...
Sure. So I'll just, really, Mr. Zilis, I think we should turn it over to Kevin. I don't want to spoil his news for the town.
Fair enough.
So if it's okay with you, I'll give it right back to Kevin.
Absolutely. Wasn't sure how you wanted to do it, Mr. Freitag.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Mr. Milano. Good evening, everyone. I'm Kevin Freitag. I'm with the law firm of Murphy, Hesse, Tumi, and Lehane. And our firm is Town Council to the Town of Milton. And I've represented as lead counsel for Murphy, Hesse, Tumi, and Lehane these past four years, the Town of Milton. And I'm before you tonight to let you know that I'm going to be leaving the firm at the end of this month. And as a result, will no longer be in that role as your lead counsel. So really, tonight, I just wanted to do two things. I wanted to thank everyone and then also introduce my colleagues that are here with me tonight that are going to make this transition seamless. So first off, thank you. Thank you to the members of this Select Board and the past members of this Select Board that I've worked with over the years, for the folks that I've gotten to meet at Town Hall and at the other departments in town and the town meeting members that I've gotten to know. It has been a rewarding, challenging, and pleasurable and terrific time to be Town Council for the Town of Milton. I've really enjoyed it, and I can't thank you enough, frankly, for it. The opportunity has been a tremendous one. I got to work with your previous Town Council, John Flynn, who was in this position for many years. He's still with our firm and still participates in the representation of Milton, along with others in the firm, who you will all continue to have access to. And I won't get into all of them specifically tonight. But I think suffice to say that the members of this board and your town administrator know them directly and have worked with them directly and will continue to do so. So thank you to all of you for the opportunity that you've given me to represent the town. Having said that, I'd like to introduce you to two folks, two of my colleagues. The first is Peter Mallow, Peter's partner at our firm. He's the past president of the Massachusetts Municipal Lawyers Association. We have been colleagues for some five years. And although you'll just start getting to know Peter now, I've gotten to know Peter over those five years, and he's gotten to know Milton over those five years because Peter and I regularly collaborate on cases and projects and issues for the various municipalities that we represent. So Peter's not coming into this cold. He knows a lot of the issues that Milton is facing and dealing with. He also knows a lot of the individuals that we've worked with regularly. And he's going to be getting to know you as well. I'd also like to introduce Madison Harris Parks. She joined our firm recently, but has shown great competency and skill and interest in the area of municipal law. She's assisted some of the boards in Milton already with issues regarding open meeting law and public records. And she's also helped me with a number of litigation matters that we've worked on. So while they may be new faces, they certainly have familiarity not only with the area of municipal law, but also with the Town of Milton. So I am confident that you will be in good hands as this transition occurs in and into the future. So with that, I'll just turn it over to Peter. If you have any remarks you wanted to say or introduction?
Yeah. Thanks so much, Kevin. And thanks for the kind words, just as I wrote them. So first of all, it's an honor to step in for Kevin. I don't say that lightly. I think there's a gravity associated with representing a town like Milton. And I feel that. And it's a pleasure and an honor to step in. Obviously, we're in the process as a firm of evaluating any staffing needs that Kevin's departure creates. We'll undertake that process deliberately. And guys like Kevin don't grow on trees. And insofar as, in the course of that process, there's any need to revisit the arrangement, we'll do that, obviously, subject to the town's preference, which ultimately, we want to make sure that the transition occurs totally consistently and in full accordance with the town's best interests and wishes. So I certainly am more than willing and honored, again, to step in. In terms of my background, I guess, just if I could state it concisely in one sentence, just a veteran municipal lawyer. Always had a passion for municipal law. It's been the majority of my practice for the vast majority of my career. In fact, it was, in a lot of ways, the impetus for my path. Growing up, I was really involved in municipal government and attended local city council meetings where I grew up and became really involved in the civic process locally. And that really triggered my interest in my career path. So I've represented dozens of municipalities, both as a litigator and with respect to day-to-day general council matters for nearly 20 years. And I'm just really honored to serve you. And as Kevin mentioned, I've done plenty of work for Milton over the years. I've worked closely with Kevin and with his predecessor, John. And I recognize the complexity of a lot of the issues the town deals with. And I'm just excited and eager to step in and work with you all and advising you with respect to all those. So thanks so much. And I'll allow Madison to step in. Madison is someone with whom I've worked closely since she joined the firm. She's an exceptional talent. We're really lucky and pleased to have her. And luckily, we've been able to kind of corral her into a lot of municipal work so far. So I think she's more than equipped to assist. And I know is excited as well to be working with the town.
Yeah, I guess I'll just add, as Kevin said, I joined the firm about a year ago. Prior to that, I was clerking at the Massachusetts Appeals Court. And so since joining the firm, I've worked closely with Kevin and Peter and other lawyers at the firm and a lot of municipal matters already, civil litigation, arbitration, MCAD and EUUC complaints. And yeah, as Kevin said, already a few matters with the Town of Milton. So I'm excited to be here and look forward to continuing to work with you all.
Great. Thank you all. Questions or comments from the members? Ms. Bradley.
I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank you, Kevin, for all that you've done for the town and specifically for all the phone calls you answered from me. Without a doubt, you were always there for any question I had. And it was a real pleasure watching you argue for our stairs, MBTA stairs. I had the pleasure of going to the courthouse and seeing Kevin actually in action. And so I appreciate that. I appreciate the time you took to explain things to me. And it is going to be a loss for our town. I'm very happy to work with both of you. Can't wait. But I just want to wish you the best, Kevin. You have really been a really good person to learn from over the past few years. And I appreciate you, and I wish you nothing but success in your next move. So thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions from the members? Ms. Musto.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, Kevin, I've called you a few times. And he's always answered my questions, and they've been sometimes a little complex, as I said, on the Select Board and the Board of Health. So he's always been willing to answer any questions, very receptive, and always good feedback, good advice. So I really appreciate that and think that you've done a good job and look forward to working with the new members of your firm. Thank you. And wish you the best in your new endeavor.
Thank you.
Other comments? Mr. Zou.
I'll just add, Kevin, that I haven't been on the Select Board long enough to have to call a lawyer.
Just wait.
You know, I sat with you at the town meeting and was always very impressed with your thoughtful comments and guidance. And I appreciate that you're leaving us in very good hands. So I look forward to perhaps now needing to call a lawyer in the future, we'll have to know who to call. So thank you again for your service.
And I will add that many times, the person who replaces an institution doesn't fare that well when you have a longstanding coach or a longstanding player. Usually, the person who replaces that longstanding individual has a difficult time. Four years ago, John Flynn, who was an institution, decided to step aside. He'd been Town Council for 30 years here. And we didn't know how it would work, not having John Flynn here. But Kevin Freitag moved in with an unassuming manner and a very deliberate, strong, and well-thought-out advice on many occasions and proved to be a worthy successor to the institution that was John Flynn. And I have much enjoyed working with Kevin over the last four years. We've worked closely on a number of matters when I was chair initially. I think Kevin became Town Council when I was chair four years ago. And so we've worked closely together. And I think the town has benefited from Kevin's representation. I've certainly benefited, just in terms of working relationship. And so, Kevin, you stepped into a very difficult position just by circumstance, and I think you succeeded exceedingly well. And congratulations on that, and congratulations on a great new opportunity. And we look forward to working with Mr. Mallow and Ms. Madison Park.
Harris Parks.
Harris Parks. My apologies. I won't miss that again. I won't miss that again. And we look forward to working with you. We'll be working closely. We have a number of matters that are brewing, as you're aware. And we look forward to the transition over the next few days and weeks. Any other comments or questions from anyone? Thank you all. Thank you for coming. Appreciate it. And we'll look forward to working together. And Kevin, we'll be in touch.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Item eight, discussion approval of multifamily zoning requirements for MBTA communities. I believe we have Mr. Zawinski for this item. Is that correct? All right.
Hey, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes. So, Tim, this is just an update. Is that right? On... It says here discussion approval, but is this just an update?
Yes. We've had some new information coming in from our technical assistance providers that I've shared with both the planning board and at a public forum that we held last Monday. So I'd just like to take the chance to kind of run through it very quickly and give the Select Board a little bit of an idea of kind of the state of affairs, where we are in terms of our testing of different districts and different dimensional parameters. So if you don't mind, I'm going to share my screen and run through a couple of very, hopefully, very quick slides.
That'd be great. Thank you, Tim.
Can you all see that?
Yes.
So this is sort of an abridged version of the presentation that I gave at a public forum last week. So just one thing that we've been in our outreach efforts, in addition to holding monthly public forums and twice a month, standing agenda items at the planning board, we've also been running a sort of ongoing survey. Every time we send out an email or do an event, we encourage people to take the survey. And this is just kind of one of the... It's obviously not scientific, but we're just kind of having a rolling results come in. 63% of respondents to our survey feel that Milton should comply with the law. That's something that we've been finding over the course of our outreach efforts. Another interesting thing that we've been learning is we've asked folks that if your property, as a homeowner or property owner, was rezoned, would you be interested in redeveloping under that new zoning? And it's actually pretty overwhelming, no. No interest in redeveloping property. Obviously, things may change in the future. If the zoning presents a juicy enough enticement to folks, we may see some redevelopment. But the appetite on the part of property owners, according to our survey, according to the folks that we've asked, is not quite there yet. And I think that speaks to a little bit of the anxiety that we've been hearing in these public meetings when you see...
Tim?
Hey, Tim.
Tim?
Yeah?
You went a little bit soft. I don't know if it was the sound from M A TV or just went a little bit soft. If you could just kind of crank up the volume a little bit?
Can you hear me better?
That's much better.
All right. I was fiddling with my microphone. And I'll just...
Don't. Please don't.
Put my hands in my pockets or something.
Don't fiddle.
I just want to say, I think that this slide and this result speaks to some of the anxiety we've heard about folks when they see that zone capacity number that we're responsible for, zoning for 2,461 units. In reality, we will never see 2,461 new units in the Town of Milton under this zoning. This is a years, if not decades-long timeline. I like to remind folks that the zoning that we have now, by and large, was passed in 1938. We're still not at full buildout under the 1938 zoning. And so the requirement is to zone for 2,461 units. It's not to build 2,461 units. And I think this result kind of shows you. It's going to be up to individual property owners. And by and large, what we've learned from folks that have responded to our survey is there's not a ton of interest in redeveloping right now. And finally, the last thing that we learned in our survey is we ask folks if there are possibilities for different community benefits that we can add requirements to above and beyond the state's minimum requirements, what are folks interested in? And affordable housing and commercial space and open space and a not-too-distant third are among the most popular choices. Affordable housing is going to be perennial. We thought it was interesting to see that folks are interested in expanding commercial space via the zoning. So that's something we'll keep in mind as we kind of go forward. So a couple of things. We've been working with two different technical assistance providers using free resources from the state. We've been trying to take advantage of all the resources, financial, technical, otherwise, that the state has been throwing at this effort. We've been working with a planning firm named UTIL. They did our kind of first test of the entire transit area, which is the half-mile radius around our Mattapan Trolley Stations. They've been continuing to adjust and refine that transit area to try to hit our compliance targets. We've also been working with the Metropolitan Area Planning Council to test additional districts on larger, more appropriate, large multifamily sites. Some of them in the transit area, some of them out of the transit area. The upshot of both of these sets of explorations is we've got a path to compliance. We'll have to make some choices. We'll have to make some compromises. We'll have to, I think, blend two of the possibilities that our technical assistance providers have provided. But I think we know what compliance is going to look like by and large. So I'm going to run really quickly through what UTIL has been doing. They've been focusing on this transit area. This sort of scalloped red line is the half-mile radius around each of those transit stations, Mattapan, Cape and Street, Valley Road, Central Ave, and Milton Station. We got a little bit of Butler, but most of that is in the river. So this is the half-mile radius. These are all of the parcels that would be affected if we were to zone the entire transit area. We initially had them test the transit area. And what they found was the primary requirements of minimum district size, we exceeded by far. Zone capacity, so the number of possible units under the zoning, far exceeded the minimum requirements. But the overall density of the district was below 15 units per acre. And that's one that's actually in the state statute. We've got to hit it. So we asked UTIL to figure out, what tweaks do you need to make to get to 15 units per acre in this area? And so what they identified was these parcels in pink and yellow, which effectively are not contributing to our overall density number. The pink ones, because we set a parcel size of 5,000 square feet, the pink parcels are all below 5,000 square feet. So when you create zoning and you have a lot that's below the minimum lot size, you're getting dinged on the land area for that parcel, but you're not getting credit for any potential units that could be built on that parcel. So these are parcels that are, if you think about it as a math equation with the number of units at the top in the numerator position and the land area at the bottom in the denominator position, these are adding to the denominator, but adding nothing to the numerator. Similarly, for the yellow parcels, because we have an interest in preserving the physical character of the neighborhood and not cranking up the density on these larger parcels to an extent where there would be wide-scale demolitions, especially in the historic district on Milton Hill, historic district on Milton Hill, you know, we zoned for four units on a 10,000-square-foot lot. These large parcels, because the compliance model that the state is using doesn't take subdivision into account, if you had an acre parcel, it doesn't imagine that there's going to be four 10,000-square-foot lots on that acre parcel. It just says, you've got a lot, it exceeds the minimum lot size, four units. So, even though we're getting units out of these parcels, they're so big that they're also dragging down that overall density number, you know, via a big denominator in the land area figure. So, they've ghosted out those parcels on this map, and then on this map basically say, we're not going to zone those areas because they're dragging down the overall density figure. And, you know, if you want to achieve your other goals and get to 15 units per acre in this district, you know, they're a liability in this case. And so, you know, they further, based on kind of size and shape of parcels, the kind of contours of the different streets, have kind of come up with these seven, you know, little sub-districts. And basically, one through five and six through seven, not a lot of differences in the dimensional standards that they've put in, except for some differences in the setbacks, as you can see. This plus adding in a sub-district at Granite Avenue gets us to what we need in terms of the outputs. So, you know, if you look at the total at the number, the total number at the bottom on the right side, these districts plus Granite Avenue, where we would, you know, cite some larger multifamily buildings, gets us to 4,191 units, which is way beyond our unit capacity. It gets us to 374 total acres, 264 sort of developable acres, which, again, is way beyond the 50-acre minimum, and then gets us to 15.8 units per acre, you know, which is, again, above the 15-unit-per-acre minimum requirement. Now, the problem with this set of sub-districts is we talked about preserving the physical character of the neighborhood and avoiding wide-scale demolitions of buildings. If you were to have a 5,000-square-foot lot size in, you know, one, two, three, and four, you're really, the prevailing lot size in that area is sort of below 8,000 square feet, right? And so, you're not going to see sites with many more units than three, potentially four units on a larger lot. In the purple and yellow areas, you've got much larger lot sizes. And in order to get to 15.8 units per acre, what UTIL did is basically set up a spectrum. So, the minimum lot size is 5,000 square feet, and then for every increment of 5,000 square feet that you have on your site, you get an additional three units to get to, there's actually a typo here, it's 27 units per acre is kind of the max. 27 units per acre is basically three units on a 5,000-square-foot lot. So, again, because every planning effort we've ever done has said the physical character of the neighborhood is of paramount importance. If you've got a minimum lot size of 5,000 square feet and are giving incremental credit the larger the lot size is, on some of these half-acre and acre parcels in the columnines of Milton Hill, you're going to start to see 10, 15, 20-unit buildings on some of these larger parcels, which, you know, again, if the interest is in preserving the physical character of the neighborhood, you've got a much better shot of doing that by doing some slight additions and interior renovations on a small lot than you do of, you know, building a 20-unit apartment building on an acre lot, you know, somewhere on Adam Street. And so, that's something to kind of put a pin in and keep in mind as we sort of go through this. I'm going to kind of try to get through to some of the other stuff. The parcels that we tested with the Metropolitan Area Planning Council are, some of them are within the transit area, others are outside of it. This is, you know, Mr. Jackson earlier kind of talked about, you know, the equity argument around kind of spreading out the impacts of this new zoning, and this is kind of an attempt to do that. You know, if you look at this map and then you also kind of picture in your head, okay, we're doing new zoning in East Milton, we've got all those 40B projects on Blue Hill Ave and Canton Ave and Brushhill Road and Blue Hills Parkway, and you start to kind of map those onto this map, you start to see that there's a lot of stuff going on in every corner of town. So, we asked them to test some of these districts to see if we could crank up the overall density by actually zoning for, you know, not three-unit buildings on a tiny lot, but actual kind of larger mid-rise apartment buildings. I won't go into the gory details on every single parcel. We can do that, you know, offline if you're interested. But basically, under the parameters that we asked MAPC to do, we meet all of these requirements that are in the state's guidelines in terms of, you know, contiguous area of sub-districts. Half of your area needs to be contiguous so that you've got one big sub-district, and then you can have smaller sub-districts elsewhere. The district area passes the test. The amount of area that we're zoning inside the transit area in this scenario passes the test. And then on the requirements that are in the statute, in terms of zone capacity, district size, and overall density, the zoning that we've and the parameters that we asked MAPC to test gets us to 2,845 overall units, which is a lot closer to our minimum requirement of 2,461. The district size, again, you know, way beyond what the minimum requirement is. And then our overall density is 23.8 units per acre. So, check, check, check on all of the compliance metrics. Now, the issue with these parcels is, again, the parameters that we gave to MAPC, and I want to especially, you know, look at this Brushhill Road sub-district, which what we did was basically, you can't see it too well on the map, but we basically took the Fuller Village parcels and the Brushhill Rehab parcel and decided to sort of rezone those. There's already existing multifamily, they're big parcels, you know, sort of on the edge of town, you know, maybe we can get a little bit more density over here. We're going to need to rethink the parameters that we put into the model because it's spitting out 1,324 units, which is way beyond, beyond what anyone would think is appropriate for that area of town. And so, you know, that's something where, okay, you know, you learn something, this is why we do the tests, we've got to figure it out. If we reduce that sub-district or eliminate it entirely, then we start to lose that total unit capacity figure at 2,845, and we'll have to add in a new sub-district somewhere else or crank up the model capacity of the other sub-districts. So, what does this all mean? Both sets of sub-districts tested by UTIL and MAPC could be compliant, but each has pros, cons, and question marks. So, I'm going to talk about the UTIL district. We'll talk about them as the transit area small lots. So, the pros, closest to the transit stations, biggest potential for lower traffic, fewer cars, fewer infrastructure impacts. Zoning over there supports the existing business districts at Central Ave and Milton Village by putting more people, you know, living in those districts, patronizing those businesses, you know, building up those business districts. The pace of change would be more gradual. Like I said early on, we're talking about a years and decades-long process of, if you're zoning in the transit area, hundreds of property owners making hundreds of individual development decisions. It gives those property owners flexibility and, quite frankly, more property rights. Right now, if you live in a house on a lot, that's all you can do. You get additional property rights if your property is rezoned, which is good for property values on an individual basis, good for property values on a townwide basis, it's good for individual property owners. And then from a municipal impact perspective, it's got the lowest potential for net new units. So, one thing, sometimes it's tough to wrap your head around it, but, you know, we need to zone for 2,461 units, but as a practical matter, if you have one house on one lot and you redevelop it to three houses, you're only netting two new units. So, there's only two additional households moving into town in that scenario. If you were to rezone Granite Ave at the state DPW yard, there are no existing homes there. So, everything you zone there is a new household. The cons, it's the largest possible affected geography, it's the least predictable pattern of potential redevelopment, you know, hundreds of different property owners making hundreds of individual decisions. If a bunch of them make them in one year and none of them make them the next year, there's really no predicting that. And then, in order to reach overall density target, it requires more significant density in the Milton Hill Historic District than I think our planning efforts in the past have indicated there's an appetite for. Those large parcel districts, the pros, opportunity for density levels to support deed-restricted affordable housing. We're allowed to zone for 10% affordable housing. You can't do that in a three-unit building, you know. Definitionally, one unit in a three-unit building is 33%. It's more than 10%. Anything that's bigger than 10 units, you start to get deed-restricted affordable housing, which is good for the town, it's good for the S H I. Opportunities for mixed-use development, you know, you can get that when you get larger buildings. Those larger lots have fewer residential abutters, and then it affects fewer parcels. So, you know, the impacts in that regard could be less. The cons, many of those units will be further from transit, you know, Randolph Ave, Brushhill Road, they're going to be heavily auto-dependent, you know, similar to some of the 40B projects we're seeing. The larger developments mean faster, more acute impacts. You know, if 100 property owners in, on Elliott Street, over the course of, you know, 10 years, decide to, you know, redevelop, that's a 10-year timeline, 300 new units, you might see 300 new units on one of these lots in the course of two years. Very quick, very acute. And then from a municipal impact perspective, as I explained, the highest potential for net new units. You know, anything that's built on Two Granite Ave is a net new unit, a net new household, all of the intended kind of fiscal impacts. So, this is, I think, one of my last slides. The question marks that we're going to have to decide as a town. Do we want to proceed with one strategy or a combination of both strategies? We may not have a choice. Is the Brushhill Road sub-district too dense at 1,324 potential units? That's a rhetorical question. I think it's too dense. So, if we reduce that in any way, we're going to have to make up that density and make up those units somewhere else. Does the Granite Avenue sub-district actually count as a contiguous geography? This is a question I have with the state right now, and again, you can kind of see it a little bit in the upper right-hand corner, but, you know, we're zoning the Salt Marsh in order to just create a contiguous district between the state DPW yard and Two Granite Ave. It's undevelopable land, it doesn't count towards our denominator of land area, but for whatever reason, the compliance model is counting it as a single district of contiguous geography, which was fishy to me. I've asked them to explain that. But again, if that district doesn't count as a contiguous geography, then we're going to need to go into the transit area and do a little bit more of work in the transit area to create a large contiguous district. And then from an equity perspective, do we want to zone for only certain portions of the transit area small parcel district? So, we could conceivably do everything in the transit area, but that means, you know, concentrated impacts on a very small, discrete geography. So, you know, these are fundamental questions. We're continuing to work them out, you know, through the planning board, through our public outreach process. We're continuing to work with our technical assistance providers to really kind of refine some of these districts and get to a level where we can start putting zoning language together. But, you know, any input or insight from the select board would obviously be a really valuable part of the process. So, that's all I've got for now. So, I'm going to stop the screen share. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Tim. Questions or comments from the members? Ms. Mustard?
Thank you. Tim, when is the next forum? If you could mention that for people?
Yes. We have, our next forum is scheduled for Monday, August 14th. Haven't secured the venue yet. We're going to try to get the Keys Room. If we can't get the Keys Room, we may do it remotely again, but I think we'd like to do that one in person.
Thank you.
Other comments and questions from the members? Tim, you've wowed the members of the select board with your present, oh, Mr. Zoll, not wowed.
I'm still wowed.
All right.
Sorry, coughed earlier. Tim, thank you so much for all of this work. I know how much effort you're putting into this, how thoughtful you're being about it, and how, you know, I think probably really so inclusive of the community with all of the different forums which you've been putting on. I've been able to come to a few of them. I think you're really to be commended for this work. I just want to sort of say while we're talking about this, and I know we're going to, our next item is the letter, oh, no, the classification, so I might save some comments for that. But we're just about to come out of the hottest month in human-recorded history. An earlier citizen mentioned how, you know, climate is really a central part of this. And I would love to see a little bit more in the sort of pros and cons around the climate issue. The more that we can zone with an eye to the future, with an eye towards emissions and reduction of emissions. We know globally that buildings are responsible for 24% of, I think it's 26% actually, of global emissions for energy usage. We know that denser buildings use energy more efficiently. We know that in Massachusetts, transit, and sorry, traffic, specifically light-vehicle traffic, is responsible for a significant chunk of our town and our Commonwealth emissions. So, anything that we're doing on this front to tackle the climate crisis is important. I think that there's this sort of myth out there that we can't do anything about climate change, either it's not real or it is real, but we can't do anything about it. We can do things about the climate crisis, and this is one of them. Zoning responsibly, zoning to take advantage of mass transit, and dealing with the housing crisis at the same time, I think it's a real win-win. So, I'm excited about what I'm seeing here. I, again, commend you for the work, and I'll reserve the right to say a few more things upon the next agenda item.
Other comments or questions? Tim, would it be hard for you to just serve up the last page of your presentation again? Maybe it will. You're on mute, Tim. Okay. So, Tim, I think you indicated you may want some guidance or perhaps some consensus from the select board on these items. What would be helpful in terms of timing for getting guidance or consensus from the select board on these items?
You know, ASAP. I think that, part of me has been really conflicted about this whole process, and I do appreciate Mr. Zoll's comments. You know, the law and the guidelines that the state has created have really put us in a box in terms of what our options really are. And so, a lot of the work that my department has been doing isn't really planning as much as it is just trying to hit numbers. And so, you know, in a lot of ways, what we've presented is not necessarily the only path, but really one of only a limited number of realistic and feasible paths. And so, you know, part of me kind of feels like we've put a lot of information out there, we've sought a lot of input, but, you know, I think if everyone in town had it their way, this isn't how we would be doing it. So, you know, we're continuing to kind of refine these districts and refine the parameters into a way that kind of makes sense. So, what I'll say is, you know, we can continue to do our work as you, you know, discuss and deliberate, so I don't necessarily expect, you know, hard answers, you know, tonight. But I think, you know, over the next few weeks, if there could be a consensus that like, yes, this is a good path, you know, we want to spread it around, or we don't want to spread it around. Because ultimately, what we're doing is getting information and really refining each of these individual sub-districts, and it becomes, you know, kind of like a toolbox where you can take a tool out and put a tool in, or sharpen a tool, or adjust a tool. So, you know, while it would be great to have input sooner rather than later, it's not imperative right now because there's still work to do, and your input will kind of be, you know, help us in a broad sense with stuff that we're kind of already kind of proceeding with, if that makes sense.
And, Tim, do these four bullet points with the sub-bullet points, do these four bullet points represent the universe of decisions that you're looking for feedback on from this board?
It's not the entire universe, but it's a couple galaxies, I'll say.
Okay.
You know, we're going to come to a point where there's going to be more granular questions that need to be answered.
Yep.
But I think very broadly, like, the geographies that we're interested in zoning are important. Are these the right ones? We think they make sense from certain planning parameters in terms of being, you know, in parts of town that are relatively spread out. They are large, non-residential or existing multifamily for the most part. You know, the real trouble is going to be when, the trouble is the wrong word, but the real tricky part is going to be, how do you adjust the dials in the sort of broadly residential transit area in order to reduce those impacts as much as possible? I've spoken with Mr. Jackson, who spoke at Citizen Speak earlier, on a number of occasions. I think his concern about the lot size in the transit area is a fair one and is something that, you know, we'll want to, to the extent that we need to zone in the transit area, we'll want to have that zoning be as least impactful as possible, you know, just like we would want to do everywhere else in town. So, I think these are like really big-ticket questions that as we get answers to them... So I think these are like really big-ticket questions that as we get answers to them, we can start to drill down on smaller-ticket questions. So not the entire universe, but the known universe, I'll say, to mix another metaphor.
Fair enough. And just, I'll get just one follow-up. Now I've forgotten it. Oh, right. And so if we circle the 22nd of August as a date to try to get you some consensus, is that helpful? Or do we need to move it up to the 8th?
I think that would be great. And really, like, the fundamental question is, you know, are these the right districts? Is this the right strategy? Do we want to spread it around? Do we want to concentrate it in specific areas? And from there, we can really start to kind of move forward with confidence on some more specific details.
Fair enough. Mr. Zoll.
Yeah, Tim, just a quick heads up on the transit area sub-district framework that you, slide that you shared, I think it was like the second or third one where you kind of had yellowed the parcel sizes. Yeah, up a little bit further. Yeah, so right there where you zeroed them out, I'm not sure if it counts or not, but right where Cape Town Street hits Elliot Street, that parcel that you've identified there, that's Shields Park. So I don't know.
Right, that's out.
Okay, yeah, so but it was highlighted, I think, in the earlier slide as like a residential lot, yeah, there.
Yeah, I mean, Hutchinson Field is also highlighted there.
Oh, yeah, okay, yep.
You know, I think that was just strictly a parcel size thing. So, you know, fair enough point. The compliance model has the ownership and land use codes, and already will take public land kind of out of consideration.
Okay, perfect, that's what I was wondering.
That doesn't count towards our numbers, you know, even though it's kind of in the geography.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Ms. Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tim, I'm just curious, is there, I was trying to write down some of your points of questions or directions you'd like for us to help point you in. Is there a way that you could get us a list of what it is that you're looking for from us so that we can actually make sure that we're sticking to what's needed and we're not going above and beyond or down a rabbit hole we don't need to go down?
100%, I'll work with Nick on getting, you know, and it'll mirror that final slide, you know, just with the broad question of, you know, are these the right geographies? Is this the right approach? And one thing, just Ms. Bradley, you know, maybe don't go down a rabbit hole, but, you know, you all are important players in this, and so I want to give you the best advice and the best information, but ultimately, you know, your role in this is to sort of, you know, guide me and, you know, help me help you, basically.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Zowinski.
Anything else? Thank you, Tim. To be continued. Thanks for all your work on this.
No, absolutely. And do you need me for any of the next agenda items?
It's possible. We're going to talk about this classification issue. You know, I think I know where we are on it, but please, if you need to chime in, you can surely stay on.
I'll stay on the line, but hang back unless you need me.
Okay, all right. Item nine is discussion approval letter to the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities slash MBTA regarding Town of Milton's Rapid Transit Classification. When last we met, on July 11th, the charge to Tim and to Tim Zowinski and to Nick Milano, the town administrator, was to reach out to the MBTA about our classification and get some background with the possibility of having a letter to follow up. We received feedback late last Wednesday, July 19th, and the feedback from the MBTA was as follows. The classification is based on the MBTA's service delivery policy, which was approved by the MBTA Board of Directors in 2021. The classification of rapid transit is comprised of two primary, of two segments of rapid transit. Heavy rail, which is the blue, orange, and red lines, and light rail, which is the green line, and the Matapan line. The rapid transit definition is also used in the MBTA's tariff and statements of, Statement of Fair and Transfer, which was Statement of Fair and Transfer, which was updated in January of 2023. Matapan was classified as either heavy or light rail lines in the pricing of a single-ride, daily, weekly, or monthly passes. So Matapan is classified with the green line for the purpose of the fares required. And Mr. Milano was informed that he was, he would hear back from the Assistant General Manager from the MBTA on policy with some follow-up questions. Not sure whether that's happened yet. It hadn't happened by the end of last week. I will point out that one segment of the MBTA's service delivery policy at page eight points out that the MBTA, quote, "The MBTA's primary light rail system is the green line." And then it points out, in addition, the MBTA operates a Matapan high-speed line, which serves as a red line, which serves as a link to the red line extension, serves as a red line extension. And that's from the MBTA Board of Directors. So what does this all mean? Well, it seems to me that, well, we haven't, in terms of a letter, because of the fact that we didn't receive this till late Wednesday, and we hadn't yet, haven't yet, I don't believe we still have yet heard from the Assistant GM for Policy from the MBTA, we don't have a letter as yet. But it seems to me that this board may want to instruct the chair to continue to work with the chair of the planning board to create a letter for our next meeting. And that letter could point out the differences between the MBTA, the green line, and the Matapan line. It seems to me those differences are significant in terms of the equipment used, and it seems that it's possible that the MBTA may have classified its rapid transit in these two categories, heavy rail, which seems clear, and light rail between green line and Matapan. It's possible that the Matapan line, those distinctions are significant enough that there might be, there might be an opportunity to point out to the MBTA Board of Directors that that classification of the green line and the Matapan line is the same may not be entirely appropriate. Seems to me there also may be an equity argument here because the green, the Matapan line passengers pay the same based on fares and tariffs, and their daily, monthly, and the daily, weekly, and monthly fees, the same as the green line. And it's quite clear that the equipment on the green line is far different and far more advanced, if you will, than that on the Matapan line. So I think there are differences that we could point out to the MBTA Board of Directors. I think there is an equity argument that we could point out to the MBTA Board of Directors with respect to the fares and classifying the MBTA line as the same as the green line with respect to fares. So I think there is the opportunity for a letter here, and if this board agrees, I would, I would work with Mr. Milano and Mr. Zowinski and the Chair of the Planning Board to try to, you know, prepare something. And I think the right audience here is the MBTA Board of Directors to point out those differences and to see if there would be any movement. I wouldn't suggest that this should be in lieu of all of the efforts for compliance. It seems to me we're working with the Department of Housing and Livable Communities with respect to compliance, and we should continue to do so. This is a question of the MBTA and whether there is, whether the classification of the Matapan line with the green line and with the fares being the same line, whether that makes sense and whether there is an opportunity for a different classification. So I've said a lot. I don't know if, Mr. Milano, you have anything additional to add to that?
No, I would just, I have not heard anything further from the MBTA, so you captured it there. And I just, the other distinction I think that's worth mentioning is the silver line, which does have its own right-of-way for much of its route, is in a different fare category and a different transit category, so that might be another place where we draw some contrasts and comparisons to in such a letter if the board were to move forward. Those are my two comments. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Questions or comments from the members? Mr. Zoll.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm not in favor at this point of sending a letter to the MBTA. I think for the myriad reasons which I've stated earlier about climate, for reasons that I've stated at previous meetings around our Milton's reluctance to adhere to affordable housing laws, which if we had been adhering to them for the last 40 years, we wouldn't be in this bind because we would be already mostly compliant, like many of the other towns that really didn't have to do too much work because they've already zoned properly around the line. I think furthermore, the investment that the MBTA is preparing to put into the Matapan line, which will include new cars, which will be identical to the cars that are the green line right now, I find it hard to find a reason that doesn't, that doesn't leave me scratching my head and wondering what kind of future I want to leave for my children. I really feel so strongly that we need to be adhering to state law, which shouldn't be a high bar of leadership, I don't think. I think that this is a real opportunity for us, and I think that the, going back and forth and trying to find a way out is what we, has been our approach to laws in the past. I don't think it's helpful. I wouldn't be signing my name to something in good conscience because I don't, other than if we're simply seeking clarification, which it seems like we've already gotten here through the policies that have been delineated, I don't think that it's a good-faith letter if we're just asking for clarification around our classification and we're not then prepared to advocate for a different classification, which I don't believe in, so I won't be voting in favor of sending a letter in to the MBTA.
Other comments or questions? Ms. Musto.
Thank you. I think that we've had, we've had a couple of speakers here, we've had some information, and I think, Mike, you said a few things today, too, that some of these decisions were made fairly recently. I think you said 2021 with the clarification, 2023. So, I mean, these are relatively new things and changes, and so I think that it would be smart for us to be treated fairly inequitable, and if we're going to be treated that way, then I think we should absolutely send a letter and point out the things, some of the things that you have put forward. Because I think that it doesn't mean that we're still not trying to comply with the law, but I think that we need to get a letter, you know, and point out some history and some significant differences that exist. And I know you had mentioned the Matapan line. I was on that call, I believe you might have as well. That may even take years. I mean, they're only at like 15% design, and there was a gentleman, as I recall, on there, as an aside from this conversation, from Matapan, who was saying, "I've been coming to these meetings for like five years," and I think anyone that was on that heard that. That being said, I'd still think that we just want to be treated fairly as a community and certainly do our part where we need to, but be treated fairly. And I don't think that there's any harm in trying to point out things that, some of the items that you mentioned, for instance, Mike, I think there's no harm in that, in doing a letter for that. It's not trying to skirt anybody's responsibility, it's trying to do the responsible thing and also be treated fairly. Thank you.
Mr. Zoll.
So I appreciate the comments from Ms. Musto. I, you know, don't believe that adhering to state law is somehow being unfair. I think there are, every town can probably point to particular aspects of its history or its unique infrastructure or geography that makes it a special case. I think in our case, we certainly have some things that are maybe different from others. I can tell you that, you know, my daughter is now regularly commuting on the high-speed trolley to Ashmont and then going to Kendall Square, and it beats driving significantly, particularly since she can't drive yet because she won't get her driver's license, but that's a different point. I really don't think that this is about, it's not about fairness in terms of which town is being treated. The fairness issues that are here are the, is the fact that the average median house cost in Milton over the last 12 months was $960-plus thousand. That's the average new house that was, or not new house even, many of these are very old houses, but the average cost that somebody bought a house for in Milton. That's untenable. It's untenable to have a housing stock that's that high. It's not equitable. It's not fair. And so when we talk about fairness and equality, we have to not think in terms of our 1960s mindset of what was fair and equal. We have to think about what kind of town are we going to be leaving for our children? And are we really going to be fiddling here while the world is burning around us, trying to get distinctions that, you know, around a law that we've heard from Tim say is probably going to be decades and that we probably won't ever see the full impact from? So I'm not in favor of the letter. I appreciate, Ms. Musto, your perspective, and, you know, I know that you're representing a group of citizens that feels one way about this. I'm representing a different group that feels a different way. So I don't think we're going to change each other's minds.
Well, can I make a suggestion? And that is, you know, from my perspective, no one is suggesting that the law be skirted. And I think what Ms. Musto was suggesting is, what is fair in terms of the reality? What is the reality of the Matapan line? And if the reality of the Matapan line means that the law should treat this area differently, well, that's something we should explore, it seems to me. So it doesn't seem to me that inquiring about the basis for that classification isn't any worse skirting our efforts. It could be that if the Board of Directors agrees with us and that the Matapan line is different, as the silver line is different, that doesn't mean perhaps we would still, perhaps the select board, the planning board, would still zone for 2,461 units. That's a possibility, right? Perhaps we'd zone for a smaller amount based on the classification now and then more later on, in the next decade, when we have transformation of the line. So I guess what I would suggest is, over the next two weeks, let us give it a try and see what that form of an inquiry would be to the, because it seems to me there are some things to be teased out with the MBTA, and it's in no way trying to skirt any requirement with the Department of Housing and Livable Communities. It's just trying to determine whether the MBTA, if their current classification is the reality. And it seems to me there are some aspects in which that classification doesn't reflect the reality, and perhaps we tease that out. So that's the only thing I would suggest. Ms. Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just had some clarifying questions. When we sent the letter, we've sent one letter, correct?
No.
We have not sent a letter?
We have not, we have not sent a letter. All we did was make informal inquiries, and our town representatives were told by the Department of Housing and Livable Communities that they based their decision on the MBTA. We went to the MBTA, and now the MBTA has provided this information about how the classification is determined.
How long did it take for them to get back to us? It wasn't very long, I don't believe, right?
No, no, it wasn't very long.
So I'm wondering if we could put a deadline on this. So let's say if we were to send a letter, if we don't hear back in two weeks, then we proceed forward with the 2,461. I'm just trying to look for a compromise here and not to let it drag on.
I'll tell you my opinion. I think we proceed regardless. I think we proceed on both tracks. Right now, the law is that we have to zone for 2,461. Until that changes, my view is we have to proceed on that route, and that hasn't changed.
Okay.
And so that's my view, is that it doesn't detract from our efforts to comply if we inquire with the MBTA whether this classification makes sense. And I would also point out, it seems to me there's an equity argument here, that the fares being paid for those on the Matapan line are, it's inequitable that that, the passengers on that line should be paying the same on that line should be paying the same as the green line. And maybe those green line trains will come online, but the best guess that we understand is that it's going to be a decade. And maybe those fares can change when those trains come online, maybe this can all change when we become like the green line, but, you know, I think there's an argument that we're not there yet, so.
If I may just say one more thing?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No, 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 that was great. I think that the equity piece is a really big chunk of this, for me at least. It seems to me that the MBTA, when they were here, other responses we've got on the stairs, they really don't seem to care about the Matapan Line. And I think that that's a shame, because I, my daughter also takes the trolley in to Ashmont and the red line to the State House, and it's great, because I don't have to drive to the State House. But I think that there's room for improvement in the Matapan Line, and I think that the MBTA really has not been putting that on any burners on the stove. I feel like it's still sitting on the counter, waiting to get onto a burner on the stove. And so for me, I'm wondering if a letter wouldn't just maybe move it a little closer to the stove so that they can start paying attention to it, because it is something that's neglected. You can tell just by, you know, the trolleys, you can tell just by the lack of stairs and accessibility to the trolleys. So I just, I'm wondering if it wouldn't hurt us to maybe put a little bit more emphasis on the Matapan Line, because it's not running the same as the green line or the silver line, it's just not. And so, I guess I'm, the only reason why I would say that we should do a letter is to try and get more attention to the Matapan Line.
All right, other comments or questions? It seems like we could have a vote on this, or I'd rather just do it by consensus, that we put together a letter, but if we want to do a vote, we can do that. Just, and I would just say, just let us, give us a try, and then we can vote the letter up or down at the next meeting. That's the only thing I would suggest.
I'm willing to vote a letter up or down at the next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Zol. Thank you, Ms. Zol. I appreciate that. So we'll, so if it's, without objection, I'll work in the next two weeks with the Town Administrator, Mr. Zowinski, and the Chair of the Planning Board to see what we can come up with, and then we'll have something on August 8th. All right. All right, thank you. Thank you, Tim. Well, you didn't add anything, but thank you regardless.
Stuck around.
Yes, you stuck around. You may stick around for the next one, too, if you want, but don't feel compelled, you're probably not going to need to say anything. Item 10 is discussion of the update of the MBTA Advisory Board and the Town of Milton Designee. So, turns out, the Town of Milton gets a seat on the MBTA Advisory Board, and because of our proximity, we get a vote, a place on the Executive Committee. And we learned it was too close to our prior meeting to put it on the agenda, but apparently on the MBTA Advisory Board, it's designated that the Chair of the Select Board or the Designee serves on the MBTA Advisory Board. But that's not the way we do things on our board. On our board, it's a vote of the Board, a consensus of the Board, who should serve. So it seems to me, even though the Advisory Board says it's the Chair of the Select Board or the Chair's Designee, it should be us deciding who it should be. I attended the meeting, they had a meeting on, we had a meeting on December 18th, and I attended as a delegate on, I'm sorry, July 18th. Six months ahead. On July 18th, there was a meeting of the MBTA Advisory Board, and in order to pursue Milton's interests and to make sure we get on the Executive Committee, I attended the meeting as Milton's Designee, but I'm going to certainly open it up to this Board to decide whether I should continue or whether we have someone else designated as the member of the Advisory Board. So, included in your packets were the minutes from that meeting, and there were, there was a, the keynote speaker was the Under Secretary of Transportation, Monica G. Tibbetts-Nutt. And after some preliminary matters regarding minutes and the Bylaw Committee, and election of the Chairs and the Executive Committee, including the Milton Designee being on the Executive Committee, the keynote speaker, Ms. Tibbetts-Nutt, made a presentation and focused on climate, the transition to electric vehicles, the East-West Rail, the ferry, cell station expansion, commuter rail procurement, AFC 2.0, which is the Automatic Fare Collection System, which was described as an effort to improve equity, and the financial cliff faced by the MBTA. That was, those were the points of Ms. Tibbetts-Nutt's presentation. It was then opened up to questions. There were some questions about these topics. I asked a question about the timeline for the Matapan Line transformation, which I see as an equity issue, and I see as the primary equity issue facing the MBTA, because it's something that's been neglected for decades. So I asked if anything could be done to speed that up, so that it wouldn't take a decade to complete the Matapan Line transformation, and the Under Secretary responded that she had not been briefed on that project, and she could not comment. And so, that was the response, and I left it there. I was promised a follow-up, and so, in fairness, it's only been a week, haven't had any follow-up on that, but I think it's fair to say I was a bit disappointed that the Under Secretary had not even been briefed on the Matapan Line transformation, because it's so critical to us and to our residents and to our riders, and she hadn't even been briefed on that. And I, the fact that, you know, if equity is important to the MBTA and to the current administration, you'd think that the equity of the Matapan Line transformation would be important, and hopefully it will become important. So, that is the update. So, comments, questions on that? Ms. Musto.
How often do they meet, and how many people are on it? How many communities? Is it every community?
No, I don't remember the number, but it's quite a number. The list.
There's a roster at the.
Yeah. The list is, and I don't remember the number, let me see if I have it here, hold on. The Board meets four to six times a year, and.
Is it fair to say that all the communities, even the ones that didn't send someone, are, have the ability to send someone?
Yes, yes. Now, we are in the smaller group, which is the Executive Committee. But I would say the number of communities, you know, I want to say there's about 80, you know, or so, maybe 79, I remember that number, but I don't know the exact number. Oh, here it is. 176 community members of the Advisory Board and the transit riding public. So it's 176, and the Executive Committee, which Milton is now a member, is a smaller group.
And it says here that the MBTA Advisory Board meets four to six times per year.
Four to six times per year, that's correct. Other comments or questions? I mean, I would be happy to continue in the role, but happy to, you know, happy to have someone else do it as well, if someone wants to.
Mr. Zol. I don't want to do it. I think if it's standard for most towns to send the Chair of the Select Board as their Designee, I think that makes sense, too. And if you don't mind doing it, then I'd be happy to nominate you to fill the role.
I appreciate it. From the people on the call, it was a mix. There was, there were mayors, you know, Mayor Koch is the Chair from Quincy, there were mayors on the call, a number of Select Board Chairs. There were some Designees, I think Somerville had a Designee on the line, and then there were some other Designees, but it seemed like a mix, you know, of Select Board Chairs or the mayors, and some Designees.
Are you making that motion?
I can, unless we want to discuss further. So I would like to make a motion to appoint Mike Zulis as the Milton Designee to the MBTA, what was it called, Advisory Board.
Advisory Board.
I'll second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. And I'll abstain, I don't always, but I'll abstain on this one. All right, thank you for that. So to be continued, if I hear from the MBTA a follow-up on a timeline for the Matapan Line transformation, I will certainly raise it, and there will certainly be other issues to raise at the next meeting of the Advisory Board for our town, so. All right, item 11, discussion approval of the fall town meeting, December 2023 timeline. Mr. Milano, do you want to take this, or should we just, is this fairly pro forma?
No, I think it's pretty standard for what we typically do at this time of year, is to just give folks a heads up for when we anticipate closing the warrant. I drafted that as Friday, September 22nd, which case the Select Board would have the warrant articles in front of them at their meeting on September 26th. And that is, I'd say, a little early, but I think it's helpful to do so as soon as we can, so we can get those over to the Warrant Committee to keep marching towards that December 4th special town meeting, as we expect the main topic of discussion to be the MBTA community zoning. So, the two key dates there would be closing, the closure of the warrant, so warrant articles to the Select Board Office by the end of business on Friday, September 22nd, and then the articles before the Select Board for approval or inclusion in the warrant at the meeting on September 26th next month, or in two months.
Comments or questions on the timeline? All right, do we want to have a motion to approve it?
I'll make a motion to approve the identified timeline that Mr. Milano outlined in the Fall Town Meeting of December 4th, 2023.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Item 12, discussion update of the School Building Committee, update and report regarding valuation of the land between Blue Hill Avenue and Brushhill Road. We have the Chair of the School Building Committee here to give an update on that. Mr. O'Rourke.
Good evening, Mr. Chair.
Good evening, Mr. O'Rourke.
Sean O'Rourke, Town Meeting Member, precinct eight, Chair of the School Building Committee. Just joining as a panelist. So the School Building Committee has met for the past couple of months regarding this property. We've reviewed it a number of times. We became, I personally became made aware of it on May 23rd from a friend that represents the real estate company. After that part, we did a site walk of the parcel, went, looked at it, and then basically, you know, worked a little bit further to dig into the details of it. I have a short presentation, if it's okay to present.
Please.
Sure. Perfect. So, my recollection was, this Board was made aware of this parcel from a member of the Warrant Committee at, I think, a public comment.
I think we'd been aware of it before that.
Okay.
Coincident with your becoming aware of it.
All right. At the time, when we were looking at it, there were essentially two parcels. The parcel that we were made aware of was zero Blue Hills Ave, which is approximately 6.8 acres, and it's, the sale price of that was approximately $3 million. After we talked with the real estate agent, the sale of that singular lot was not available. You had to buy the, what is called the lower lot, shown in purple, and the upper lot. So essentially, it's approximately 11 acres for roughly $9 million, $7 million, sorry about that. So, the first thing that we noticed as we walked the site is the topography of it. So what you see in the upper portion is basically a plan view of the site. The thicker brown lines that run through there are essentially topography lines, they represent 10-foot intervals of grade elevation changes. So, what I tried to do, just to give some perspective to it, if you take the blue line in the center of it, it's essentially a section cut down the site. So when you look at it, the bottom right side of the site is about elevation 60, whereas the bottom, the left side of the site is about elevation 180. So it's about 120-foot differential in grade. So what I tried to do, again, for people that can't really look at a topography map and see it, is what you see in a section view, basically the terrorist leveling of that site. So that became one of the biggest challenges that we're looking at for this. When we compare that, you know, against Gallo Road that we're looking at, you know, the middle portion of Gallo Road, or the highlighted section in the middle there, is essentially where we were planning to build a school there, it's essentially flat. So, as a committee, when we were looking at this, you know, obviously we were comparing this to what we were doing at Gallo Road, and that became one of the big differentiators. The other one that plays into it, too, is essentially the zoning buffer. We have long lot lines along the edges, it's about 1,500 feet. So the zoning buffer that we had per the building code was roughly about 50 feet. So when we put those in there, it basically takes the site, shrinks it down, and basically reduces it down, you know, the 6.8-acre site goes to about 4.8 acres. The 3.8-acre site on the upper level goes down to about 2.8 acres. So again, it takes a very challenging, long, narrow site that slopes significantly and squeezes it down even more. When we looked, you know, part of the thing that we're looking at is we're building a school, we want kids to be able to walk to it. When you go to Blue Hill Avenue, and you look along the road there on 138, there are no sidewalks, so there is no way for children to walk to the school along Blue Hill Avenue. Similarly, when you go up to Brushhill Road, there are no sidewalks there either. So, talking with DRA Architecture, who we engaged as part of our discussions on this, having a through road through the site at the grades that he was looking at, which is basically 10 to 12% was impossible. So what it meant was, if we were to build on the site, there'd have to be upper level and lower level pickup or drop off and parking. So what that means is, a lot of traffic up here, a lot of traffic down in Blue Hill Ave, because we wouldn't have that kind of throughput through them, they'd have to enter here and come back. The other thing that became, we became aware of, is the stone walls that are here and the historic nature of them. So if we have to break through those stone walls to make those entrances and exits, it's another historical thing that comes up. Even further, when we go to the Mass GIS site, and we look at the information that's available there, the National Register of Historic Spots, which is actually designated as red dots, two of the houses on there are under the Historical Society's, you know, purview. So, a member of my committee, Mark Loring, who was also on the school committee, reached out to Milton Historical Society and also Mass Historical Society. As you can see, this was the letter issued to us from the Milton Historical Society, basically, you know, stating the significance of the properties that were up there. So for us, you know, our conclusion of basically how we came to our decision that we're not, we took a vote last night to not recommend this parcel for the construction of a new school. You know, the first and biggest one that I tried to highlight in the slides is the site geometry. It's a long, wide site with a very steep slope. The building, if we did try to build one there, would have to be very compact and very tall. It doesn't, so that type of construction, along with the site work that would have to happen, just led to a really elevated construction cost of this entire parcel. You know, the site cost, our architect basically indicated they'd be close to double what a typical site cost would be, which is 10 to $15 million adder, so basically a $20 to $30 million site cost. The planned educational facility that we want to put on the site, we probably couldn't fit what we were planning with the upper middle school and pre-K wing. As I mentioned, the zoning buffer squeezes the site down and makes it even tougher, you know, the historical nature of the residences makes it tough. And then, you know, finally, it's not a walkable site. So, you know, with all those things kind of listed out, that's how we kind of got to our conclusion that we did not recommend it. With that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. O'Rourke. I would just add that you mentioned the 10 to 12% slope. I think it was Mr. Franzeski from DRA said typically what you're looking at as a maximum is a 5 to 6% slope. So this is about double of that. The other thing that he mentioned that was striking to me was that because you'd have to have a tiered system here, you'd have half the building without any sunlight, because it would be built into the, it would be built into the earth, essentially, and it might have to go up about four stories. So, Mr. Franzeski. Committee not to recommend, you know, further negotiation to purchase this site for a school purpose. So, anyway, questions or comments from the members? There's no action requests, it's just really just questions and comments. Mr. Zoll.
So, thank you for that comprehensive report. I was, you know, the point about the land loss from buffers, I thought was pretty compelling. I think basically you were losing three acres of land on those buffers because of the narrowness of the site. I was just wondering if you knew the comparable amount of land at the Gile Road site that would be lost from buffers?
Yeah, so the Gile Road site, one of the advantages of that one is the land that's adjacent to it, essentially Brooksfield is owned by the school, so there's a zero buffer there. Along the Home Inc. side, I believe it's a little over 300 feet along that edge that we had, so we have a 50-foot conservation buffer, then an additional 50-foot zoning buffer. So, 15,000 square feet, which is much less than an acre that we'd have there. On the other side of the parcel, where we're building the road, there's basically just the frontage there, so there's not a lot of zoning loss there. So, that became one of the, you know, for me, when I initially started looking at it, jumped out immediately to me.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Other comments, questions? Ms. Mustafa.
Thank you. When you were looking at this lot, were you taking the diagram that you had for the proposed school that you're putting up, that's getting up near the high school? Did you take that and try to superimpose it there, or did you look at other options or other sizes?
So, what we did is, the first take that we did, we asked our architect on the committee, Glenn Hoffman, who's actually appointed by this board, to look at it and see. There are what are called model schools, which are, you know, just blocks of what they have for schools. None of them fit on the site when he first tried it. He then took the Gile Road concept that we had and laid it on there. I actually have a copy of it, I can present it or I can send it. The problem was is, as he laid it out on there, there was really no room for anything to get by it. And essentially, what he did is, took the building, tried to straighten it out. It was kind of a little bit of a bent building, and he straightened it out. Even with that, with the zoning buffers that cut it down, so the frontage at Blue Hill Ave is roughly 400 feet. When you take the 50-foot zoning on either side, it brings it down to about a 300-foot entrance. So, we laid the building out on there. The other problem with that, too, is he was taking a building that was meant for a flat site that we had for Gile Road, and then trying to lay it on a terrace thing, so it really wasn't representative of it. So, partially, what we did is, you know, as we were looking through all this, we were going to engage DRA to do conceptual studies. What could they build on there and stuff like that? But as we looked at it, we're like, it doesn't work, so why would we spend the money to prove something that we already know? And we asked that same question to Carl when we were talking with him, and he agreed that it's essentially, it wouldn't be money well spent. Technically, you know, from an engineering point of view, like I say all the time, is we can build anything if you have the budget for it, but, you know, just trying to be cost-conscious on this entire thing. With site costs roughly 10 to 15 million dollars extra, site acquisition costs roughly $7 million to purchase it, you know, we're 17 to 22 million dollars before we even break, before we can build foundations to build a building. That for us there just made, basically made it cost prohibitive to kind of dive deeper into the site.
Yeah, please.
Okay. My other question, I guess, would be, was there ever any thought of, I know that one of the things you said is walking to school and things like that, but was there ever any thought of switching it, like, looking at all of your buildings and maybe switching it to a different kind of school there? Maybe it would be a, you know, maybe the younger grades would be there? Where you're already busing kids mostly at the younger, where they're getting dropped off and not necessarily walking if they're, you know, preschool or kindergarten and things like that? Was there any thought of maybe, you know, looking at that and looking at the other properties and seeing, just, you know, to just walk, you know, look at all your options?
Yeah, we looked at, we thought about, similar to what we were looking at Fopon for an Early Childhood Education Center. The problem with that within my committee is that, you know, it doesn't solve the overall problem of overcrowding at all the levels. So, even if we were to do that, we'd still have to do another project. So, if, for example, if we stripped the preschool wing off of what we'd be doing at Gile Road and put it up at this property, we could do that. We still need a middle school at that point. So, that, that's, you know, we, we, we looked at that, and it's just, it would make it more sense to put it all at one site that we currently have, working on an agreement on, rather than split it apart and then building on a site that's terraced that costs $7 million.
Yeah.
So, I guess what I was saying, or trying to say is, not just the preschool, like, if you were doing, you know, the preschool and all the kindergarteners, or like, you know, something creative. I'm just trying to throw all the options out there to see if that would have been something that would work, you know, so you would free up some area for the other grades where you need the space. That's all. You know, maybe you could move things around, just, you know, because I think you should look at all different options, so I didn't know if that had happened. That's all.
Yeah, and part of what we're doing, too, that was challenging is, we know this is the open market, so we wanted to give you guys, you know, our take on it, so that we can make a decision on which, or you guys can make a decision on which way to go. And for us, you know, as we were just evaluating it, any project that you were trying to put up there, just because of that terrace site that's there, is going to be challenging and expensive.
Okay, thank you.
And I would add, just, you know, from the discussion at the School Building Committee, while our architect on the committee tried to fit this building in to see if it would work, that's not what the consultant focused on. The consultant focused on whether this is a site where you can build a school generally, whether it be a preschool or kindergarten, or just because, and the, as I understood it, the consultant from DRA said, for all of these reasons, it really is a challenge to build a school on this site, and it's going to be, it's going to be more expensive, and then there are downs, even if you decide we're going to spend the extra money, there are still downsides beyond that. So, I think that led a lot of us to say, you know, to continue, this would really be kind of a fool's idea, but that's based on the consultant's advice. Other comments or questions? All right, I don't think we have a motion. I don't think we have anything to do. Appreciate the report, and I'm sure we'll see you in the future.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item 13 is Discussion Update, Youth Task Force Report. I believe this is Mr. Zoll.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I'll try to keep this short in the interest of getting home at a reasonable hour. I'm very pleased to say that the Youth Task Force met and will be meeting again this coming Monday. At the last meeting, we elected Rachel Posar to be our Chair and Zadie Rose to be the Secretary. It's a really good, lively group of folks. We had a few people that were out of town, but, you know, they read the minutes. The, our members who are members from the high school, I watched the video of the meeting, so that everybody's up to speed. Everyone is laser-focused on figuring out what we can do to really provide better opportunities for kids in this town, particularly, especially for older kids. Recreation activities for them to go that doesn't include Cunningham Park after hours. Thinking about meeting the needs of all students, looking at the Behavioral Risk Survey that came out, talking to the stakeholders in the town. I believe the minutes are publicly posted at this point. One of the things that we're focused on is still, we need a rising ninth grader to serve on this task force, so we're thinking about it. I'm mentioning it here again, in case anyone watching at home or here knows a rising ninth grader who would be interested in participating. And at our next meeting on Monday, we've asked Chief King, who has tentatively said he may, depending on family travel, be able to join, or else send his lieutenant to join us, and Tony Will from Cunningham Park, to meet with that group, to essentially not just revise the remarks that they made to the Select Board, but to help the Youth Task Force in thinking about educational outreach opportunities to parents around town. Really not just about Cunningham Park, but other ways that we can be reaching key stakeholders in the town to get their input, their ideas, their feedback, and to make them aware of some of the problems that exist right now at Cunningham Park, and really sort of more broadly with access to recreational activities. So, it was a successful meeting. Like I said, our next one's coming up on Monday, and I think we've got a good group of folks here that are really excited to get to work.
Thank you, Mr. Zoll. Questions, comments, Ms. Brad.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Zoll, the rising ninth grader, what's the process for filling out an application? Is it the same as our volunteer application?
I believe it's the same, yeah.
It's the same? Okay. And the other, there's only two students, is that correct?
So, currently, we have two. We need a third.
You need a third?
Yes.
Okay, all right, great. Thank you so much.
My pleasure.
Other comments or questions? Thank you, Mr. Zoll. Item 14, Cunningham, Discussion Update, Cunningham Park and Teen Activity. I think we're going to Mr. Zoll for this as well.
Yes, thank you very much. So, I had the opportunity, as I was asking Tony if he would be able to come to our meeting.
Tony Will.
Tony Will, yes, thank you, from Cunningham Park. If he'd be able to come to our Youth Task Force meeting to kind of get an update, and also spoke with a member of the team at the, on the security team there. And I'm pleased to say that they have advised me that the activity has dropped off. They say there's typically a drop-off in the summer, but it's maybe more than a drop-off than they usually see. So, if folks are talking to their kids, that they are, they're aware, they feel, at least, you know, there may be some heightened awareness about the problems in the woods. Tony Will also shared with me that he is putting together a video, which he hopes we'll be able to share, that they're working on doing some digitization of where they're going to be able to blur out faces and identifying features that will show the best and the worst of Cunningham Parks. So, he shared with me, he has, he's just sent a video of a brutal assault that happened in the woods that was shared widely on social media among Milton youth, showing a kid getting kicked repeatedly, including kicked in the head. And so, these are activities that we, the chief has told us about, and Tony informed us about it, Margaret Carrolls from the Coalition. So, we have a Coalition member also in the Youth Task Force who we're also liaising with to try to figure out how we can get some of these, this information, including video information out to folks, so that they can see that what they think is happening in the woods, what some parents may think is happening in the woods, is the reality is far more dark and terrible. So, I think it's sort of a good news, bad news situation. Our hope is that we can do a lot of this educational outreach before the return to school, when a lot of the parties start happening. And so, anybody with thoughts or ideas about how to get some of this material out, or groups to meet with, we'd be very happy to. Both of the Youth Task Force, I know Margaret Carrolls at the Coalition would be happy to meet with folks, and I'm sure here at the Select Board would be interested in hearing them as well.
Questions or comments? Ms. Mustafa.
Thank you. I was going to say, I think that's a good start, and it's good to hear that Tony Will's putting something together. I will say that I did get various phone calls after one of our previous meetings where there was mention of sexual assaults being, happening at Cunningham Park. I know that two of our members talked about that, and actually, a friend of mine from another town was driving somewhere and heard something on BZ, I think it was BZ Radio, that was talking about that. So, with that being said, I would like to hear from the police chief what numbers of assaults are happening over at Cunningham that are reported, because I think that's an important thing, because the community's asking, certain people have been asking about that. And I do think that's important for people to know.
Oh, yeah, please.
Yeah, Ms. Bradley.
I can tell you that a lot of the assaults are not being reported. These are young girls that are very nervous, and they are, they want to keep their social status. And I can tell you personally that it was not reported. And so, I think that the numbers are not going to be where people think that they are, and so I think that that, well, that's a good idea to get those numbers. I think that the reality of it is, is that many young women do not report assaults. Many young adult women don't report assaults. That's a fact. You can look it up at the Rape Crisis Center. It's just the way that things are. And so, I would, I would just like to keep in mind that while the numbers may not be there or be shown, there are many personal stories of folks that have been assaulted there and have not come forward. And so, I just want us to all keep that in mind as we're moving forward.
Mr. Zoll.
Yeah, I'd just like to add on to that, because I think it's such an important point. Sexual assault is by far sort of the leading under-reported crime in this country. And it's not, it doesn't just happen to women, it happens to, it happens to men, it happens to non-binary youth. You know, a lot of, a lot of kids are at risk for this, and as Ms. Bradley said, you know, these kids, the woods is their social status, and they, losing the ability to go there, for many of them, we know how teenagers, you know, important their peer group is, they will suffer physical abuse, sexual abuse, mental abuse, without reporting it. If reporting it would mean that they suddenly lose access to an important social group for them. So, I think, I think it's, I think it's a good idea to raise sexual assault awareness and to talk with the chief about it, and to maybe think about, are there ways that we can encourage kids to anonymously report sexual assaults? But I think we definitely need to believe the women and the girls and the boys in this, in this instance, that this is happening in the woods.
Ms. Mustafa.
Thank you. Myself, I'm a reporter, so in terms of healthcare provider, if somebody came to me, I would have to report that. You know, whether it's anonymously or whatever, I'd still have to report it. Do I think that the numbers could be there and not reported? Sure. I mean, everybody knows that. Anyone in healthcare will tell you that. I think the duty of us as adults is to report it, and even if it's anonymous, so that people know what's going on, meaning our police department. So, I guess what I would suggest is, if anybody has had an experience with somebody coming to them or talking about that, that they really should, and if they want to keep it anonymous, that's fine. But I do think that, you know, when people in the community are asking about this, we have to let them know whether it's, and people are, you know, this is happening and it's anonymous, but it's getting reported, but, you know, we have to let them know so that they have an idea of what's going on. And I, I just, I guess I would like to strongly say, if anybody is in a profession where you have to report things, they should be doing that. So, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Ms. Brad.
Mr. Zoll, I heard you talking about the folks that are being brought in to spread the word about what's happening up there. I'm just curious if, we have a new AD, a new athletic director, and I'm bummed that Mr. Burrows, Dr. Burrows left, but I'm wondering if there is talk within the task force about bringing in the new AD and maybe setting, even the school committee, setting a policy within the school committee about if a youth is caught in the woods, what the ramifications are. Many of them play sports, and so I'm just wondering if that has been broached with you guys?
Yes.
Oh, perfect.
Thank you, Ms. Bradley. We definitely, not just the new AD, but thinking about coaches and other sort of authority figures that work with, you know, work with a lot of kids to help, to bring them in, to chat with them. That's definitely on the menu.
Thanks.
Ms. Mustafa.
Thank you. I do remember at one point when both my kids played sports at the high school, they had to go through a mandatory presentation, and they, and they couldn't play sports if they didn't, and there was like a code of conduct. So, that might be something, too.
I'm not aware of that, so.
I don't know if that's still going on, but they used to have to.
Seems like it did.
Yeah. Oh, no.
Oh, really?
It was about drugs and alcohol and things like that, so, yeah.
Anything else?
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Will. Again, to be continued, and thank you, Mr. Zoll, for taking that on. Item 15, this is the revisions and update to request for proposal for affordable housing at the Ton Farm. I believe we have Ms. Kramer here, and we have a draft with some questions embedded in it. And so, good evening, Ms. Kramer. Sorry to keep you waiting.
That's okay.
So, why don't you tell us how we should proceed here? How you Item 15, this is the revisions and update to request for proposal for affordable housing at the Ton Farm. I believe we have Ms. Kramer here, and we have a draft with some questions embedded in it. And so, good evening, Ms. Kramer. Sorry to keep you waiting.
That's okay.
So why don't you tell us how we should proceed here, how you would like to proceed?
Sure. So in your packet this evening is a draft of an RFP that has, you know, initially was created by MHP, who does the community work for these RFPs in most towns. And there's just a few comments that the, the woman from MHP had that were really oriented towards the Select Board making some, sorry, the Governor Stotan trustees, making some decisions on, you know, just a few, a few bullet points. And so the Milton Affordable Housing Trust responded back with some additional notes and ideas on the questions raised, and our hope is that, you know, as a, as the Governor Stotan trustees, you can review those and hopefully get it to a place where we have a draft that can then be finalized, and some dates put in there relative to the release date and the response date, and, you know, a site tour date for potential responders, and, and we can move this one step closer, closer.
So, so just to clarify, thank you for that. These are decision points for the Governor Stotan trustees, in your view. And I do have one question, and just as an initial matter. This is an RFP, it would be put out by the Town of Milton, according to their RFP. How does, do you know how that works mechanically? Would it be the trustees authorizing the town to do it on behalf of the trustees? Would the trustees be putting it out? That's the one thing that occurred to me in the course of this.
I, I believe, and we could ask MHP, but I believe the Governor Stotan trustees would be putting it out.
With the issuing of power.
Because you're the owners of the land.
Exactly.
I mean, unless you wanted to give it to the Affordable Housing Trust to put out, or the Select Board.
So that would be a change here. We would, we, this would be the Governor, so we'd have to make that change. It would be the Governor Stotan trustees issuing this RFP rather than the Town of Milton.
Yeah.
Okay, fair enough. Sorry for that. Questions or comments from the members? Ms. Bradley.
Should we schedule the Governor Stotan meeting for August 8?
Seems to, makes, makes sense.
Is that okay? Is that within the timeline, or?
Yeah, I think that would be wonderful, and then you can, you know, go through the finer points and, you know, hopefully get to a place where you can, you know, finalize a date and, and move it, move it one step closer.
Did Ms. Donatholi, did I see your hand up, or? No, no, sorry about that. Okay, okay. Put your hand up. All right, and that would, that would give us time to get, get feedback from the neighborhood as well, if we were to do that in a couple of weeks. Hopefully, we can get some feedback. Ms. Musto.
I would say that August and July, we know that people go on vacations, so I would advocate more for the beginning of September, even after school starts, because a lot of people are away.
Okay. Okay.
If we're, if we're trying to reach neighbors, I just.
Yeah, I understand.
You know, I mean, they're away, so it's the summer. Milton sort of gets quiet in the summer.
It's a good point. It's a good point. Doesn't preclude the board from discussing it, seems to me, the trustees from discussing it, seems to me, and then we could keep it open with the board having made some decisions, and then could make a full presentation to, to the neighborhood. Other comments or questions? Mr. Zoll.
Yeah, so I, you know, we had a gentleman, it was Bob Sweeney, sorry, who came in representing the real place during the citizen's speech, so, you know, I'm just curious to ask, because I think it's, you know, making sure that, you know, adjacent homeowners are informed. What would, what would be our process for that?
Well, that, that would be for the Governor Stotan trustees to decide, because the Governor Stotan trustees, which are, that's us, right? But meeting, meeting as Governor Stotan trustees, we would have to decide what that process would be. And that, that actually goes to Ms. Musto's point about what the best way to do that and the best timing for that is. That seems to me that would be a Governor Stotan trustee's decision.
If I may follow up.
Ms. Zoll.
Yeah, so, and my microphone was off, so I just want to sort of repeat that I, I sort of flagged that Mr. Sweeney's comments earlier about making sure that we're informing adjacent homeowners, which I think is a, is a good one. So if that's the case, then I think that Ms. Bradley's suggestion that the, that the trustees meet August 8 to sort of figure that out would make sense. And I don't think it would then preclude, I don't think that's the, we, sort of the action point, but I think it makes sense for, for the trustees to meet those mysterious individuals who, you know, look exactly like us. That, I think that, I think that makes a lot of sense.
And I don't, we haven't met as Governor Stotan trustees since, I think, May, so it's, so I think we're due anyway. So Ms. Kramer is the eighth, I'm not putting you on the spot, but we'll reach out to see if the eighth works well for you as well.
Yeah, no, I think that's fine. You know, I will just say that, you know, the closer you get to the end of the year, most folks in the affordable housing world have deadlines for the state financing.
Okay.
And so, you know, I just want to make sure we're, we're giving, you know, the, the great number of wonderful developers we have in this state, and even in this town, a chance to respond. And so, you know, pushing it till the end of the year could, you know, could be a time crunch.
So what would you say would be the sweet spot for timing, Ms. Kramer?
You know, it would be great if it could be released in October, and it would give them time to respond.
Yep.
But, you know, like a February date's really tough, because we have all of our applications due into the state for the funding, and so, you know, if you push it into that date, you're going to have a lot of folks who just can't handle those, you know? And the funding round would take precedence, because that's how they get projects funded.
So, so that's very helpful. It seems to me that, you know, if we can't, if we can't reach out to the community, get feedback, and make a decision by October, then, you know, maybe someone else should be making the decision. So hopefully, we can, we can work with that time.
And, you know, the only other thing I would ask is, you know, an RFP did go out for the, you know, when Pulte was awarded, you know, there. And so maybe you can look back and see what kind of community involvement you had in, in that process. And that decision was made, you know, fairly quickly and without much fuss, I guess. And so, you know, that's just another sort of data point for you, for you guys as Governor Stotan trustees, to know what you did previously and maybe bring that forward.
Okay, very fair point. Other comments or questions? All right, so we'll, we'll see if we can tee this up, at least for a discussion on the eighth as the Governor Stotan trustees, and we may have some other, other items on the agenda for Governor Stotan trustees. Sorry to keep you waiting so long.
Nope, that's okay.
Appreciate the, appreciate the.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Item 16, discussion update, Napaunset Superfund project. Mr. Milano, is this something for you to lead the way on?
Sure. So just wanted to give the board a high-level update as to where things stand on the study that was done by Ty and Bond through a grant to look at dredging essentially from Milton Landing out, all the way out to, towards Quincy and beyond. We have a report back from Ty and Bond about what their feasibility study of the Lower Napaunset River dredging. And the big-picture takeaway is essentially that due to the sediment contamination primarily from PCBs as well as other heavy metals, the cost to dredge this area would be significant, upwards of $25 million to $37.5 million is their estimated total project budget for the Napaunset River dredging, driven by sediment disposal due to the contaminated nature of the area. One of their takeaways was suggesting that the town start to engage with EPA to see if EPA will take on this project and this area and this work as part of the bigger superfund project along the rest of the Napaunset. And that is because the contamination that is in the Milton portion and beyond is, you know, assumes to come back from all the same sources that have polluted the rest of the Napaunset. So at this time, we are still engaging in terms of what that process would actually look like to start to go to EPA to request that their superfund site be expanded. We did have a follow-up meeting with Ty and Bond, as well as Attorney Karis North from Murphy, Hesse, Toomey, and Lehane, to better understand what that process looks like and what it would entail. So that is going on. I just wanted to let the Select Board know to see if the board has any questions, concerns about us continuing to proceed down this path in terms of gathering information to begin to put into effort, an effort at essentially lobbying and petitioning EPA to consider expanding the superfund designation that they have for the Napaunset River to, to clean up the, you know, truly the full Napaunset River, not just the portion that's currently identified to take on. So I'll leave it at that. I did include the Ty and Bond report, the narrative sections in the Select Board packet that has a lot more background. Happy to take any questions that I can handle or any other comments at this time.
Questions or comments from the members? So Nick, you don't need any decision from us unless we were to tell you not to do it. You know, it seems, it seems to me there's probably consensus in this board that we should proceed down that path, and then we'll have a decision point to go one way or the other, once you figure out what we need to do officially to ask for it, it sounds to me like. Is that fair to say?
Yes, that's right. And it sounds like what, what that would look like is a lot of comment letters throughout the EPA's public comment portions, anytime that there's an opportunity to raise this issue with them publicly, to do so, to engage our federal legislative delegation to work with EPA through those routes. So it'll be a lot of advocacy work and a lot of reach out, you know, similar to some of the stuff that we do at Airplane Noise Advisory Committee. So as, you know, steps in that process come up, we'll, we'll follow up with the board. As letters are prepared, we'll obviously send those under the, under the cover of the board with, with the board's approval. So that's the kind of stuff to expect moving forward, and we'll keep you engaged as we start advocating on behalf of Milton in this, in this respect.
Any reason not to move forward? Part of the members was seeking to expand the superfund designation to include this, the warfare. All right, so Nick, please proceed and see if we can make that happen, and we'll be ready, willing, and able to do what we can to make it happen as well.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Item 17, discussion approval, Milton Municipal Broadband Committee update regarding the town INET. No approval needed here. Two updates. One, our consultant advised the, consultant which reviewed our designer's view of the topology of the INET suggested a revised fiber typology to give us maximum flexibility, a maximum flexible approach to splicing and fiber terminal in order to provide the best backbone. It's a dual-ring topology that's being suggested. All the nodes, which are the various connecting points, would connect from one core, there would be two cores, to another, so it would allow us for maximum flexibility both with the INET and if the town decided at some point that it wanted to go down the road of fiber to the home. So that's the, that made sense to the broadband committee. There's no additional costs that we're aware of, and so that's what, that's what the town administrator communicated to the designer to move forward on based on the consultant's suggestion. Second, we are still waiting for a cost estimate if we were to include lower mills, which isn't currently, which isn't currently, there is some noise here, but I don't know if it's outside or if it's in a computer, but I guess, no, no, Lynn, you don't have to leave. It's okay. No, no, it's fine. It's fine. We can, we, we don't need to, we don't need to worry about that. So, so we hope to have a cost estimate on including lower mills, if that's going to be additional cost.
Right.
We don't know yet, and if that's additional cost, we'll report it to the board. That's, that's it. Any questions, comments on that? Item 18, committee appointments and reappointments. I believe this is just advertising, Mr. Milano, is that right? Or?
Correct. We continue to carry postings and vacancies on the town website. Mr. Zoll mentioned the Youth Task Force earlier. Others are the Equity and Justice for All Advisory Committee, the Affordable Housing Trust, as well as Traffic Commission. So if anybody is interested, all that information's on the website, but feel free to reach out to me with any questions about how to, how to get involved, or if you're not really sure which boards committees might be a good fit, we're happy to have that conversation and, and attract good volunteers.
Traffic Commission is, has been and will be a critical entity in this town going forward, and so anyone who really wants to make their mark, Traffic Commission is something where you can do it. So any other comments or questions on committee appointments, advertising? Item 19, discussion approval of appointment of election poll workers per the list included in the agenda.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Bradley.
I'll make a motion to appoint the election poll workers per the list included on the agenda as seen below under Election Workers Appointment List as listed. I'll second.
I'd like to just make a comment before we move to the next item.
Sure, can we just have a second? So motion's been made and seconded, and now discussion, Mr. Zoll.
Thank you. So it was brought to, I think, a number of folks' attention that there were some disparities in the operation of the polls at the last town election, with some folks sort of being asked to not use cell phones, other people were allowed to use cell phones. So I just, I wanted to take this opportunity, as we're talking about the appointment of these election officers who are so fantastic in their willingness to spend hours at the polls, making sure that we can exercise our rights as citizens to vote, but I want to make sure that we're getting some consistent training for the poll workers so that they understand what's required of them and where they should be stepping in, where they shouldn't be stepping in, because the disparities that were reported at the last election, I think, just raised some concerns that there were, you know, you know, depending on the precinct that you were at, from an equity perspective, folks were concerned that maybe some folks were being treated different than others. So I just wanted to raise that. I'm, again, super grateful for all of the election workers, and I think most of the time, mistakes like that are simply just mistakes. And, and so trying to iron those out before the election, I think, would be really helpful.
Other comments or questions? That is a, in the, in the province of the clerk, so perhaps we could ask the clerk to come in and talk about the training for the poll workers.
I think that would be wonderful.
If that's something we should, we should do. All right, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Item 20, discussion approval, application for the use of the town green and barren Hugo gazebo for a vow, vow renewal ceremony.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Bradley.
I'll make a motion to approve the application from Mon Carmel Isador of Hyde Park to use the town green and barren Hugo gazebo for a vow renewal ceremony on August 5, 2023, from 7 to 8 p.m.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Item 21, this is a, this is a item that we had on a previous agenda, discussion approval, one-day liquor license for the Eustace Estate Historic New England for, on August 19, 2023, for David Chestnut Jazz Festival. Mr. Milano, do we have an update on that since our last meeting?
Sure. Since our last meeting, I did follow up with Eustace Estate directly, as well as the building commissioner. I include Ms. Rosenstein's email in the Select Board packet, and her, her email tracked what the building commissioner's interpretation, which was that there are essentially three kinds of uses at the Eustace Estate. One is museum-related activity, and then two others would be non-museum-related activity, one with amplification, one without, and they each have different kind of standards that are applied to them. More specifically, the non-museum-related activity is governed by the special permit that was issued by the town's Board of Appeals, which does limit the number of non-museum-related activity with amplification to two per month. As her email noted, her, her view is that this is museum-related activity. The building commissioner felt the same after looking into the information they provided, but she did note that in addition to that, they do not have two events, which is their limit, non-museum-related events with amplification in the month of August. So even if one were to interpret it as such. So even if one were to interpret it as such, it's, it's within their rights under the special permit to have at least two of those. So just wanted to clarify that those three different kinds of events that are being discussed here, it's the town's view as well as their view that this is museum-related activity, so they're able to go forward and have this event. And that there are other kinds of events that are governed by that special permit and which they adhere to.
Comments or, Mr. Zoll?
So I just wanted to, I, I, this kind of caught my eye when this was on the agenda. And I did a little bit of research, and so I hope you'll indulge me. So David Chestnut, it's actually spelled with no T in the surname, worked at the Eustace Estate in Milton, Mass. He was black, was employed first working with the horses, then the chauffeur. Following that, he worked as a chauffeur for the Endicott family in Dedham. Through that work, he was able to purchase property and acquired other properties, using them to house his family and for rental income. He was one of the only black landlords in the area by the mid-1920s. And he was a huge music aficionado, a jazz enthusiast. He was, he played the trumpet, played in many marching bands in the area. He left a musical legacy. And so I think, and I've learned that the Eustace Estate honors him and does a bit of work around his life during Black History Month. But as we know, Black History Month shouldn't just be February. So I think it's worth noting for the record, Mr. Chestnut's life, his love of music. And I think, I can't think of a probably better legacy for someone like that than to start a jazz festival. So I'm looking forward to going to this one, frankly. I think it's going to be fun. And I absolutely love the connection to the history and, you know, the, the black history of Milton and the area. So I'll be voting in favor. But I just wanted to read that into the record.
Thank you, Mr. Zoll. Other comments or questions? I, I would say, you know, it's certainly compelling to me that the building commissioner says this falls within the special permit. Eustace Estate says this is a, considers this a museum-related activity for an outdoor fundraiser. And so that seems to me to be compelling in this fact that, that it likely, that it falls within the special permit. So anyway, so I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion to approve the one-day liquor license from the Eustace State Historic New England 1424 Canton Ave. For August 19th, 2023, from 11:30 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. For the David Chestnut Jazz Festival.
Without Chestnut.
Without the T.
Without the T.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Item 22 is acceptance of a pilot payment from Curry College in the amount of $110,000. It is good news to have the pilot payments coming in from Curry College. Again, we had a little bit of a, of a, of an interruption during COVID because of the challenges Curry faced. But it's great to receive this amount from Curry College. I would mention that Mr. President Quigley is moving on. After many years as the president of Curry College, we invited him to come to a meeting, but he is, he is tied up on Tuesday evenings. And so sometime in the future, he may, he may be able to join us. And we have also reached out to the new president of Curry College, Jay Gonzalez, who's taking over on July 31st. So we hope to, we hope to have him in to, to meet him as well. But this is for an acceptance of the pilot payment, perhaps the, the final one under Mr., under President Curry, President Quigley. And very much appreciated for a long time. Curry has led the way on pilot payments. Milton Academy has, is, is catching up and doing better on pilot payments. And so these two institutions are certainly doing, 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 making some pilot payments. We'd always obviously like a little bit more under the policy, but we, we appreciate what they can do. So sorry for the editorial comment. Ms. Musto.
Just want to thank Mr. Quigley on his way out for, you know, signing the check and sending this over to us. So very much appreciated and behalf of the town.
Absolutely. All right, we need to have this accepted.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to accept the pilot payment from Curry College in the amount of $110,000.
I will second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Item 23, which is approval of meeting minutes, meeting minutes from the 27th, June 27th and July 6th. I think is there, we may want to defer on the 27th. Is that, is that the question? Ms. Musto.
Thank you. I was wondering if we could defer the 27th. And I had a, well, the reason why I would say to defer, defer the 27th is I was reading the minutes from the 27th. And then there were a few things in there that if you hadn't seen, seen or the previous minutes from the previous meeting, it didn't make a lot of sense. So I felt like we might want to reopen the ones from the 13th to make a few additions. And I can certainly write those up and send them to Lynn at some point or call her and go through those for review. And then the 27th. And then the newest ones here, which are 7/6. I had something that I had wanted to add into this that was said under number three with the committee appointment, because it has one line. But there were other things that I think should go in there with what I was said. And I guess my general thing that I would say about minutes is that we need our minutes to really reflect the detail of our meetings. I was talking to someone today who said, I read your minutes. I just don't have time to sit and watch a three- or four-hour meeting. And so I just feel that we have to have the minutes a little bit more reflective in some cases. I think Lynn does a great job, for sure. But I think there's sometimes we need a little bit more detail on certain things that if you read almost like a timeline, it's hard to follow if you read something isolated by itself. So, I mean, I don't know if we can, if you prefer to defer the last one or how you want to handle it.
So is there any, almost as all?
I'm just curious. I mean, we've approved the minutes from June, what would have been the date of the earlier?
13th.
13th.
And I don't know that you can go back and unapprove. I guess you would have to move to.
You can reopen and amend, I think.
So it would be a motion to reconsider, it seems to me. It would have to be made by, I think in this instance, probably made by someone who voted in favor of it, which would probably be Ms. Musto. So I, so I think we can put that, we can't discuss that now. It's not on the agenda.
Right, exactly.
But perhaps we can put it on the agenda for the next meeting for a motion to reconsider. And then is there any objection to deferring on the other minutes and getting the comments from Ms. Musto? An objection to that?
No objection.
All right, so if there's, if there's no objection, then we'll just, we'll take those minutes up on the 8th. And so if you can, Ms. Musto, if you could, if you could send what you have in to.
Sure.
And I would just note that, you know, there are different views on, on minutes, how specific they should be and what's important. You certainly can't, in minutes, you can't write every word, write every sentence, write every sentiment. You just have to capture the sense of the meeting. And the important things really are the motions, the actions that we take. What's said is, is, that's really an art, it's really more art than science. So I think Ms. Napoli does.
No, I think she is a fantastic artist.
But, but we'll, but certainly, certainly there's, it's good to have input. And that's why we approve minutes, because we want to have all the input we can. So we'll take up those on, take those up on the, on the 8th.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Bradley.
Thank you. I, is it possible, Lynn, for us to see that redlined for what Ms. Musto is proposing as changes to the minutes? Is it possible for you to do that in a redlined version for us?
Like attract changes.
Like attract changes?
Yeah.
Awesome. Perfect. Thanks so much.
Yeah, I might like go over them in person with her and have, whatever you want to do, that's fine.
Okay.
I was told that my minutes were too painful.
I love your minutes, Lynn.
You do a great job, Lynn.
That's, I think that's.
You do a great job.
That's, I think that's great. I think it's great. All right, item 24, Town Administrator's Report. Mr. Milano.
Thank you. I don't have much tonight. I am away with my family for the week, so grateful to have some time away. Just wanted to make two announcements. First is that Kathy Bowen has retired from the town after a 20-plus-year career. Her, she was given a plaque, excuse me, by the Conservation Commission that I thought was very nice and on it. She was described as the heart and the soul of Milton Conservation, which I thought was an apt description, and I couldn't do better than that. So wanted to repeat that for tonight. And then we did post a position in our, in the Select Board Office, Town Administrator's Office, that after a reorganization, we posted for an assistant town administrator. We have hired Colin Lozelle, who was previously the assistant town manager for the town of Tingsborough. He will be starting on Monday, July 31st. So my first day back, he'll be there and we'll be back to work right away from there. So great to have Colin aboard starting Monday. And I'm sad to see Kathy go, but well-deserved after a long career with us. Thank you.
You'll have nothing to do with a new assistant town administrator. All right. Thank you, Mr. Milano. Chair's Report. I just want to reflect on the event today held at Fuller Village, where the, the Council General of South Korea came to Fuller Village to bestow the Ambassador of Peace awards to our Korean War veterans and the families of those who had served both in Korea and in the time of the Korean War. It was a, it was a great event organized by Kevin Cook, our veterans' agent. It was originally, genesis of it was with Stanley Bauer, who was a Korean War veteran. And Mr. Cook had reached out about the possibility for this award. And then it grew beyond that to several veterans and the families of several veterans. And so it was a, it was an event where the Star Spangled Banner was played and the, the South Korean National Anthem was played. And Mr. Cook made a presentation, or made a, made a speech. And speech by Council General Kim was certainly well-taken in the presentations that he made to the veterans. And there were presentations of citations from Senator Timblett and Representative Driscoll. And there were cupcakes and, and refreshments. And it was just a wonderful event put on by Mr. Cook and Molly Welch, relatively new executive director for Fuller Village. And so really one of the great events that we've had. There must have been.
Eighty people.
Two hundred. I was going to say two hundred, maybe, maybe.
Eighty or ninety.
Okay, all right.
Might have been close to a hundred.
All right, a hundred. We'll say, we'll say a hundred. Maybe I, I'm, I'm, I'm one of those people who over, overshoots the. So yes, so it was a great event at Fuller Village and.
There were a lot of people in hearts in that room that weren't there physically.
Yes, yes, absolutely. So that's, that's all I have for the Chair's Report. Public comment response? We had several public comments tonight. Anything in terms of response? Don't not, don't feel compelled. We can always talk about it another time.
Well, Mr. Chair, I just feel like we should point out that I think we discussed multiple points that were brought up in the public comment during the meeting, so.
Yes, yes. Ms. Musto.
I think to Mr. Zoll's point, there were a lot of different people here, a lot of great points that were brought up with, you know, regard to MTA communities, affordable housing at Town Farm with neighborhoods. So I think there were a lot of great feedback from residents. And I just wonder, I know we allow 15 minutes, but I'm wondering, have we ever really, based on how many people want to respond? Have we ever thought of doing like an extra five or something?
It's a good point. And I meant to put on the agenda considering extending it because John Driscoll reached out to me a few, few weeks back. And I forgot to put it on the agenda. But he, he said, you know, it seems like a lot of people want to be heard and maybe just extend it a little bit. Maybe you give people maybe four minutes and maybe extend it to 20 minutes. Just give people a little bit more time because a lot of people want to be heard on it. And, you know, we have a lot of work to do and we're here at 10 o'clock. And, but seems to me we might want to consider, consider maybe extending it a little bit. So if there's no objection, we'll put that on the agenda. We've been talking about that.
Adding on to that, too, I think, you know, tonight, it was kind of, well, we had multiple hands up that were online.
Yes.
People in the audience maybe didn't know.
Yes.
To put their hands up. So reminding the audience that's here.
Yes.
Would be, would be.
Yes, that was my, that was my miss. And so we'll pick that up. We'll pick that up in our, our efforts to, to improve every night, every meeting. Anything else on public comment response? Without objection, we will defer on items 28 and 29.
Yes, do we need 27?
I need 27.
Oh, where are we? Oh, my, I got ahead of myself. Future meeting dates? Any issues with the 8th, the 22nd, and the 12th?
Not right now.
All right, no issues? So we'll move on from item 27. Any objection to deferring on items 28 and 29?
No objection.
Seeing none. Item 30.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone. We're just over three hours, so a little bit longer than we'd like, but we did our best. Thank you, everyone, for attending. And we will see you again on August 8th. Thank you very much.